Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting of Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the broadness of which this nation is, one nation under God, with the equal vote of the representative states and all.
Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Sinks. Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Here.
Mayor Sharf.
Here. Okay, so prior to this meeting, we had a closed session. There were two items. One was public employee performance evaluation, Government Code Section 54957. For City Attorney, we conducted the annual evaluation of the City Attorney. No reportable action was taken. The second was conference with labor negotiators, Government Code Section 54957 dot six. The representatives were myself and Vice Mayor Paul. The unrepresented city employee was the City Attorney. We gave direction to the labor negotiators regarding compensation for the City Attorney. No reportable action was taken. Okay, we are on to ceremonial matters and presentations. For item one, this is the recognition of the Fine Arts Commission Young Artists Award winners. So can you come forward? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and the City Council members. This is the young artist award winners that are being facilitated today. This was run by the Fine Arts Commission of Cupertino. I'm Rajeshwari Mahalingam, the Chair of the Fine Arts. With me is Suda, who is the Vice Chair, and we have our members Sonia and Diana as well, who will come up on the stage later. Just a brief introduction as to what Fine Arts Commission does. It's a group of five citizens that are selected by the City Council members, and our main aim is to foster, inspire, encourage, and motivate fine arts for the public, for the benefit of the public. And one of the things that we do is, being Cupertino, we have put out this Young Artist Award, and this is under two categories. Group A for the elementary students and Group B for the middle schoolers. Of course, we do have for high schoolers and anyone else who is a citizen of Cupertino as a part of the Emerging Artist and Distinguished Artist Award, which will come on later. For now, I call upon the winners in the category of Group A, ages six to 10. The Platinum Award winner, Sankrit Rao. Oh, could I please request the Mayor to come and hand out the awards? While he comes just a tidbit, the Platinum Award winners in both the categories receive $150 check. He's perhaps our youngest.
Okay. So in the spirit of the County Health Department's recommendations, we are now going to do elbow bumps instead of handshakes.
Yes.
So congratulations, and you are?
Sankrit Rao.
Sankrit Rao.
Thank you, Sankrit.
Did you want to say anything? No. Okay.
Please stay here.
Yeah, so come over here, and if the rest of the council can come up too, that would be great.
Oh yeah, please. I now call upon the Gold Award winner, Sirwan Choi.
Come up. Okay, we don't have our photographer here today. Oh, there you are, okay.
We'll do it together.
Oh, okay, we'll do it together, great, okay.
Any of the parents who are interested in taking pictures of your child, get the award from the Mayor, please feel free to do so. Now I call upon the Silver Winner, Chaiman Lee.
Congratulations, and we'll do the elbow bump instead of a handshake, okay.
Another, yet another Silver Awardee, Navanshi Fadke.
Okay, congratulations, elbow bump. Can the rest of the council come up for us? Okay, all right.
Also, we had a lot of applicants. It was very difficult judging, and many of the entries were so good that we had to give the Honorable Mention Award as well. So please welcome our Honorable Award Mention, Honorable Mention Awardee, sorry, Anika Shanoi.
Okay, congratulations, do elbow bump, okay.
Congratulations once again, and our next category is for Group B, ages 11 to 14. Our Platinum Winner, Ananya Dev.
Okay, congratulations. So maybe we do two rows because it's getting, gonna be crowded here, great.
Our Gold Winner, Balakritika.
Congratulations.
Our Silver, Niketa Krishnan.
Okay, congratulations.
As Raji mentioned, it was pretty tough. We had a lot of very wonderful, fantastic entries that this group has two honorable mentions, Jayden Choi and Tanush Agarwal. Please come on to the stage.
Okay, welcome.
So I would like to just say that congratulations and beautiful, incredible work, and thanks to your teachers actually for submitting and for allowing you to submit to this program. And please tell your friends and families, and your work is already put up on the library wall, so go and watch it. Yeah, and continue to take part and please encourage others. I would now request the other City Council members, Vice Mayor Paul Darcy and everyone else, to please join us in a group picture. Thank you. I request other FAC members as well, Diana and Sonia.
All right, thank you all. Okay, the next ceremonial matter is a proclamation to Santa Clara County Librarian Nancy Howe upon her retirement and recognizing her dedicated service to the community. Is Nancy here today? Okay. And Claire.
Good evening, Council. I am not Nancy Howe. I am Jennifer Weeks. I am the acting county librarian. Nancy has retired. She sends her warmest regards, obviously, for all of you and for this great honor, and I'm here, obviously, with Claire Varese from the library.
Good evening, Council, City Staff. Thank you so much for acknowledging Nancy this evening, and our apologies that last minute she wasn't able to attend. Nancy has been an integral part of the Santa Clara County Library District for 25 years, serving as our county librarian for the past eight, and she's always had a particularly close relationship with Cupertino Library and has maintained strong relationships with our city, with our city staff, our council, and our library commission, as well as with the Friends of the Cupertino Library and Cupertino Library Foundation, who I know also extend their thanks for Nancy's support of them and of our library. One of Nancy's key contributions during her time as county librarian was ensuring that all of our libraries opened daily. And for Cupertino Library, serving a community that truly loves and values its library, this meant opening our library even more, giving us the most open hours of any library in our district, and it's a credit to her leadership.
You mean more than daily?
Pardon?
More than daily?
More than what? More than daily? No, but daily, but the most, even more, yes.
Even more than daily?
Well, no, not even more than daily, I know.
Thank you, okay.
Only you, Councilmember Sinks, with the semantics, no, I know. I appreciate it, though, but at any rate, it's a credit to her leadership that our library continues to be so accessible to the Cupertino community, and for that, we are truly appreciative of all that she has done for us. And while we are sad to see her retire, we wish her congratulations and all of the best in this new chapter of her life, and we thank all of you on the council for recognizing her this evening.
Great, so if you can come up and accept the certificate for her? Third ceremonial matter is proclamation recognizing March as Red Cross Month. I believe Stuart is here to accept. Welcome, Stuart.
Thank you.
We would like a speech.
A little one. So Red Cross is happy to help serve the city of Cupertino and Santa Clara County and throughout the United States, and we have 20 volunteers in Cupertino. Luckily, Cupertino is pretty safe. We only had three fires this year that we had to work, and unfortunately, I don't know how much blood we've collected from you, but we're 40% of the blood supply throughout the United States, and so we really appreciate your support, City here.
Great, well, no fires. We did have a flood today, though.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the council will join me up there to present this to the Red Cross, and then you guys can, council can stay up there for the next one. The fourth ceremonial matter is proclamation to Carl Valdez for being awarded Superintendent of the Year by the Maintenance Superintendent's Association, MSA of the San Francisco Bay Area. So is Carl here, and Roger Lee will come up, or first he'll make a speech, you have 30 seconds.
Very briefly, yes. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works, good evening. This is to recognize Carl Valdez for the Maintenance Superintendent's Association Jerry D. Scott Award of the Year, Superintendent of the Year Award. Carl is responsible for a diverse group of professionals down at the Service Center. Over 70 professionals work down there. He's done a very good job of implementing quite a few and furthering programs down there, doing good work for the community. Carl has been with the city, it'll be, it was two years ago in November, but is a 38-year Public Works professional. And the MSA was started back in 1966, and we have the original founding member, Jerry D. Scott, for whom the award is named after, in the audience, Jerry. I'm gonna give a shout out to him. So it was very nice to have one of ours recognized by the MSA, so we'll get up and get a picture with the council, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Roger. I just wanted to say real quick, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for honoring me with this. It is truly an honor to be here at the city of Cupertino and to represent the city with our organization. As Roger said, this organization was founded in 1966 and is comprised of cities and agencies throughout the entire San Francisco Bay Area. I'm very honored to have many of my colleagues here that are on our chapter board who helped select me for this, from City of San Jose, City of Santa Clara, City of Campbell, City of Galt, our association president who's here, Pleasanton, Palo Alto. My lovely wife is here supporting me after shoulder surgery, so it's just a great honor. Thank you so much.
Great, congratulations. Yeah, let's take one picture and then we can have everyone else come up.
Thank you.
Would everyone else like to come up and be in a picture? It's not required? No? Okay. All right.
This is our chapter president.
Okay.
Jerry, can you come up here? This is, the award is named after Jerry Scott.
So you said your name is Steven Martin. So, yeah, I'm Steven Martin for my first and middle name. Yeah. Steve Martin, exactly. All right, thank you all. Elbow bump, okay. Where does this go?
Did you find the eyelids?
Where's my agenda? Somebody took my agenda, oh. Okay. Okay, Madam City Clerk, are there any postponements?
No postponements, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we are on to oral communications. I have a number of cards here, just for your information, we can take no action for items not on the agenda, nor can we discuss any items that are in litigation. So the first three people, Larry Dean, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Larry.
Thank you, Mayor Sharf, and good evening. I'm Larry Dean with Walk By Cupertino. And on behalf of the Board and the membership of Walk By Cupertino, I'm here to give a pat on the back to our city staff and our leaders for the great work they've done with the Burn Avenue and with the McCollin Road infrastructure improvement. Two years ago, a year and a half ago, no sidewalks, with the 90-degree turn at the bend, very unsafe. Today, it's a whole different picture. So I know it's been a lot of work, a lot of hard work for Roger Lee and the team, but our thank you to the city leaders and staff for that. I'd also like to call out the leadership for the good work with the BlackBerry Farm Burn Avenue entry meeting that was held several weeks ago. The team had a great turnout, there must have been 30-plus people there, very collaborative, and I think, I think the staff and the residents will be coming up with a great solution for that entry. That entry, along with the Carmen Bridge, is two key links to the bike boulevard network for Montevista, so it's very important. Also, anecdotally, the bike lanes on McCollin Road, I'm sure that you hear feedback from many of the citizens, but I think it's really settled down, and one of the things that I've noticed that is really a positive is that it's slowed traffic down, and I think it's much safer for the users of that route. So that is going, going very well. In conjunction with the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Urina and Sergeant Gonzalez, we've been tracking vehicle, pedestrian and vehicle bicycle crash data for the last five years. And you can, you can see the last four years, actually, how we have a declining scale. It's the opposite of right and up. This is right and down, and this is good. The trend lines are going in the right direction. Exactly why, I think, staff and the community can kind of think about that, but I think probably one of the reasons is just general awareness. Behind all of that, well, the trend lines here for cyclist crashes run from about 40, 40 a year down to 35 this past year. Pedestrian auto crashes are around, were around about 30 per year, now it's like 15. This gives you a little better feel for the cyclist curve, so it's, it's all really, really good stuff. Anecdotally, out of the, out of this data, about 10 out of the, 10 out of the 40 cyclist crashes were youth, high school kids and under, and about, about five out of the 15 of the pedestrians were students.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Jennifer Griffin, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Yuwen Su. Welcome, Jennifer. So everyone gets three minutes, so please plan for that.
Good evening, City Council. It's always nice to see the youth of the city having, pursuing great futures. I just wanted to take a moment, you know, obviously today is the election, and I, because of the housing bills from the last three to four years, I will tell you that I voted differently than this year than I would normally. I thought very, very long and hard about every candidate, every issue that was on the ballot, and forefront in my mind was what is happening at the state level because of the housing bills, what is happening at the San Francisco, Oakland and Berkeley level, and what is happening in the Bay Area, and what is happening to Cupertino. I took that account into everything I voted on, and I will tell, say again, I voted differently than I ever would have, and I will continue to vote differently from the rest of my life. I have said before that the housing bills, especially, I won't mention ADUs because we're gonna talk about them later, but that was the stone that kicked over the fence. I am firmly convinced that we are in a constitutional crisis level at the California level. These bills and the CASA compact are a, I don't know what you would call it, a fascist, proto-communist, uber socialist. I, I actually looked up definitions, and I actually came up with a dystopian universe for ADU. I won't talk about that, but I am firmly convinced that we have a power struggle going on in California. The housing bills have affected Oregon and Washington State, and I sometimes am terrified over what is happening to democracy on the West Coast. I never thought I would live to see something like this happen to my state, but I am pledged that from now on, we will push back, and no one else will use the term "by right" to take our land, our control, and our city government and power away. That, to me, is one of the worst abuses, is for a group like the CASA compact and the housing bill people to say something is by right. It's not by right. We have a state, we vote, and I voted my right, and I hope everyone else will pay attention. Our democracy in this state and the West Coast is at peril. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Yuwen Su, followed by Mina. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, staff, visitors that are here tonight, and any people that are listening online. I'm Connie Cunningham, resident of Cupertino. I'm a Housing Commission member, but I am speaking for myself only this evening. The topic that I want to talk about, you will be hearing on March 17th. It is the 2019 Progress Report to the State of California on the progress that Cupertino has made on its annual housing element. Our progress is this: In 2019, zero applications for homes were issued in Cupertino, and zero building permits were issued. That is not progress. Zero homes will be built from those zero building permits. Zero homes will not help in our community. Seniors seeking to downsize, young people seeking to buy or rent a home, and people who are afraid of rising rents that will force them out of their long-term homes. That lack of progress does not honor the intent of the housing element in our general plan. It does not honor our commitment to each other and to our neighbors, nor will the state be impressed with zero. New draft housing targets will be coming out in June. I think we should just get ahead of those new targets by taking it on ourselves to find a way to build in this expensive market. We must begin a new effort to get ahead of our own housing needs. We must look beyond numbers. Safe housing is a human right. Cupertino does have a below-market-rate housing program with some rentals and some for-sale homes. However, the number of homes in that program has not increased in decades, except for the Veranda 19 units that opened in 2019. Note that that started several years ago and opened last year. Obviously, with no new starts in 2019, we will see no new homes soon. Cupertino has few homes in the missing middle. We have many more homes for high-paid tech company employees, yet it is known that for every high-paid tech employee, there are four or more workers in our city: teachers, hospitality workers, retail, teachers, and also students at the ends of college. For a sustainable city, we need housing for all incomes and abilities. There will be Arena Study Session in the next fiscal year, however, we already know many things. One, we know we need multifamily housing. We know where some of those properties already are. Some are listed in the general plan already under Land Use 26. Under Land Use 27, it discusses multifamily residential design. Techniques are also listed, everything from ADUs, lot consolidation, flexible development standards, surplus properties and the like. And I will just summarize: Things that we need to build are information, and we have it. Money, state and tech have stepped up. Contractors, there are affordable housing builders building in our region, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, San Jose, but not here quite yet. Housing-friendly rules, that is what we hear.
Can you finish up, please?
Yes, one last sentence, sorry. Housing-friendly rules, that is what we can offer here. I urge you as the council to look at our rules and open the city to multifamily housing. Thank you.
Okay, Yuwen Su, followed by Mina, followed by Charlene Lee. Welcome, Yuwen.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmember and the city staff. So my name is Yuwen Su. I lived in Cupertino for 20 years, and so we have heard about the San Gil is suing the city because the city decided to, city council member decided to remove the office allocation. So, and then we heard about the, some negotiation between the city and the San Gil, and we also heard about that the, this, like, the city is also planning for the outreach program to discuss with the residents about the new BACO plan. So last time, city was also trying to work with the resident for the outreach, community to work with the resident for the outreach, community outreach for the design of the VAALCO, which is called the optical. I think a lot of people still remember that. So the process was not very successful because the design and lack of the, and also the process, lack of the community input. And even, like, we went through the process to the end, and the plan was not adapted by the San Gil developer. So this time, if we will consider to have another outreach with the resident for the new plan of the VAALCO project, we need to conduct a lesson and learn. So we need to know why it was not so successful. And also, we, as a resident, I want to see the new plan is compatible with some other successful story in the Silicon Valley. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mina, followed by Charlene Lee, followed by Chin Pan. Welcome, Mina.
Hi. Good evening, council member and the city manager. My name is Mina. I'm a Cupertino resident, and tonight, my speech only represents myself. Today, I want to talk about VAALCO. VAALCO Shopping Center redevelopment was concerned by many residents in past ten years. It's important in our life, not only because it's a major shopping center in Cupertino, it's also because that includes some activity centers for family events. And as I know, many friends hope to see a good redevelopment plan for VAALCO. And recently, we noticed that the developer almost finished their demolition job, and some of us also heard that a new plan is ongoing. So we are wondering if our city can start a community outreach program at early stage when you work on a new plan on VAALCO. So our city can listen to their residents and represent us, know what the residents really want, before they negotiate with the developer. Actually, in the past, our city had some so-called community outreach program several times, but I think the survey had some design flaw, so residents can only, they were only given chance to say yes, or some good things about some predetermined plan. And we cannot express our opinion freely. And there were also some community meetings at this community hall about VAALCO. But in that meeting, we think the setting may be not so successful, so people cannot write down their concern about the project and cannot provide their real opinion. So this time, we hope the new council and the city manager can give us a chance to speak up. Please do the real community outreach on VAALCO as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mina. Next, we have Charlene Lee, followed by Chin Pan, and the last one is Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Charlene. Is Charlene Lee here?
Hi, my name is Charlene Lee. I lived Cupertino for twenty years. But as I said, Oakland just fired a police chief, and Fremont City, they have police meeting with resident of Fremont, and Assemblymember Ken Sen Chu before is city council member of San Jose. They do say the agenda should be decided by us, not by you. So I have come here for half a year, and I talk every three minutes, but you keep reject to put this into agenda or invite a police chief to come to here. The Monta Viz High used a school magazine to force, the assistant principal, Andrew Cronizer, forced four students to lie in this school magazine, and they lie, I stood at the parking lot, and they lie. Assistant principal have financial specialist talk to me, and then they have later to lie, I put a death threat to Eber Young. But always a fact case, I was be putting jail one year as Samsung VP's wife. What's the reason to put Samsung VP's wife to into jail for one year? We need to be transparent for this case, and we need to invite the police to come to talk about it, and have Monta Viz High former principal and assistant principal to talk about it. Right now, the assistant principal, Andrew Cronizer, become the teacher of Cupertino High. But this Andrew, why he become the teacher, well, he kept force Cupertino High student to lie in the school magazine and to put innocent people into jail for one year. We need to think about it. I got year master degree, and my husband have year PhD degree. We got a lot of complaint. The police target Asian American to put them in jail, and put higher psychiatry to lie in the report. And they put in the jail one year, two year, and nobody care, because this city is a city of Nazi, and they discriminate Asian American. It's not a person, the city should be favor Caucasian. They should be fair to Asian American. And I come here half year, but they never talk about it. So why the Palo Alto have police audit committee, and San Jose Police Independent Audit, but in here, Santa Claus shared office reject to do any investigation. And in the jail, they rape women, so we need to care about it. Thank you.
Okay, Chin Pan, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Chin Pan.
The city councils, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. And I'm a twenty-year Cupertino residency. And tonight, I speak on my own, represent myself. And today, I have two things I want to talk about. One is the coronavirus, and the second is the VAALCO outreach program, possibly. We all know the coronavirus is impact China, and now it's coming to our home here. Now, every day, we see no new cases. I really appreciated Cupertino actually park, would be able to supply the doggy bags everywhere. And I'm hoping, you know, Cupertino can do something. And like, for example, put the sanitizer in public space, the kids can, you know, remind them to keep their hands clean. And like, for example, here, outside of the door can put the hand sanitizers when we have gatherings to prevent the virus to be spread further in the community. And the second is, we talk about the VAALCO, you know, we see is all demolished, and I hoping the outreach program. You know, given that, I don't know how long this coronavirus will be existing here. Maybe we can be brainstorm using some ways outreach to the whole community, using some electronic format, and like the other to speak, talking about, you know, design the survey in a meaningful ways that the community actually can provide true input, what they want to the side to be developed. I personally, I hear about the housing shortage. I have three kids, you know, no way they can build their home here. So I really looking forward to see affordable homes build here. My daughter told me, Mom, you cannot sell the home, because this is our home. So to them, this is their hometown. They want to stay here. They want to come back to have their home here. So, and office already, you know, a lot of them here already, more office buildings were making the housing issue even worse. So that's two things I want to talk about. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So, Madam City Manager, can you look into the hand sanitizer issue, putting them throughout the city? And then, I guess, you have been responding to people that have been asking about the outreach as well.
Do you want me to give a little update here?
If it's permitted. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so as I said in several emails received both last night and today during the day, the plan for a VAALCO-specific plan or alternate plan outreach is within the next couple of months, eight weeks, I would say. And that would include, of course, coming back to council for any additional guidance slash input before going out to the public and talking about what may be emerging there. Right now, the discussions are ongoing. They're positive, but there's no, there's nothing for me to talk about just yet. So I will, hopefully, we'll be getting some, we have gotten some contracts on board, both for outreach and for the survey, and I've gotten, taken notes about the previous survey and making sure we don't repeat whatever was done last time. Thank you.
Okay, great. Last card, Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rhoda. I'm here to talk about a number of concerns I have regarding Lehigh Quarry, permitted quarry, which is owned by Heidelberg Cement in Germany. I have three handouts for you. Makes good for good nighttime reading. Please do take a look at them. In there is a letter from the Sierra Club, which is denouncing the quarry's expansion plan. And another concern I have is that Lehigh has applied to the Air District for a portable rock plant. And I have not gotten any conclusive information from the county. However, when I asked Lehigh about this at one of their open houses, they assumed that they had a right to install a new rock plant. And my letter details as to why I think they don't. And putting in a new rock plant would give us a double whammy for traffic. One, they would be selling materials off the hill, and the other, those materials could be used to fill the quarry after the quarry is completed. So, and their plan, of course, is to import materials, and they make, so they make money going two ways, but also we get double the traffic. And this is something that is of concern to the city of Cupertino. Another, I'm a lot very worried today, also, of course, about the coronavirus. The other thing I'm worried about is that Lehigh might cause another landslide at the ridgeline between the quarry and Ranch of San Antonio. They've done this before. There were no consequences, just a quiet land swap between Mid-Pennsylvania Regional Open Space District and the quarry. And they want, they want this ridgeline, which is protected by a deed, but the deed is only as good as three votes on the Board of Supervisors. And this is why it is so important to protect this ridgeline. They want to take it down a hundred feet over a half a mile. And if they don't get their way, I'm concerned that they might take it. Right now, Lehigh has both filed an appeal with the State Mining Geology Board and also entered information into the county courts. You'll also find in here some quotes from basically not just Lehigh's chairman, but the chairman of Heidelberg Cement, who this, it's a huge company. It's one of the largest building material companies in the world, and he specifically talks about the plant here and describes the neighbors as Silicon Valley freaks. And it just, everything he says shows the disdain that this company has for the city of Cupertino, for his, even his own management team, and their inability to run their plant. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Rhoda. We are on to reports by council and staff. This is for our committee assignments. Rod, would you like to start?
Nothing new on my committee assignments. We've had no meetings.
Okay. Councilmember Chow.
I think it's just the Legislative Review Committee. So we had a meeting yesterday. We had some updates. There are 2,100 bills proposed this season, and a lot more housing bills, ADU bills, and bills that will try to reduce the impact fees cities can charge. So, yeah, so we vote, we decided to watch two of the bills. I think all the update will be on the website.
Okay. Councilmember Paul.
I had no committee assignment meetings these last two weeks.
Yes, you did. Yeah. Councilmember Willie.
The one scheduled meeting, the joint schools meeting, which I was really looking forward to, has been postponed, so.
Okay. I attended the disaster council meeting, and I also went to my favorite one, Airport Noise. The FAA was there as usual. We elected new chair and vice chair. Actually, the chair is the same, the vice chair is different. And we are going to have to put on the agenda whether or not we continue on this roundtable past June. It's funded until June, and each city decides whether to join or not. Not all Santa Clara County or Santa Cruz County cities are members. San Jose has declined to join. So we do have to put this on the agenda, have some discussion, and get some input from residents that are affected by airplane noise as to their desire, their opinion on the viability of this roundtable. And, yeah, that's all I had. And that's it. Great. So we are on to the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, has anything been pulled?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'll move Consent Calendar, items six through nine. I will second. Vote with your lights. Okay, we are, wait, did that go?
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we are on to the second reading of ordinances, item 10. The second reading for municipal code amendments to Chapter 19 dot 112, accessory dwelling units, Chapter 19 dot 20, permitted conditional and excluded uses in agriculture and residential zones, and Chapter 19 dot 08, definitions for clarifications, and consistency with recently adopted state bills, application number MCA 2018 dash 04, applicant city of Cupertino, citywide. So is there a staff report? This is the second reading, so, no staff report?
Typically, there's no staff report. I'm here to answer any questions you might have, though.
Okay. Before questions, I do have one speaker card, Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, City Council. Believe me, I've learned a lot more about legislation and bills and housing bills and ADUs than I ever thought what I learned in school. It's been a good refresher. Just because a bill is written by an assemblyman or a senator and then signed and moved forward in the city, I'm sorry, in the California Legislature, see how much I've learned, and is signed by the Governor October, does not mean that it is a good bill. In this case, the ADU bills, there were many, many of them that were introduced two years ago, a year ago, actually. There are several that are two-year bills, which was quite interesting. It doesn't mean that they're good bills. The governor chose about five to sign, and they are already causing bedlam across the state. In no way is a four-foot setback acceptable. Five feet is the minimum in Cupertino. I do not believe that Mr. Ting or Mr. Chu are zoning experts. I don't even think four feet is legal in San Francisco, where they are doing their political escapades. So why would they even begin to assume that Cupertino does not know its own business? Five feet is the minimum in this city. What right do they have to challenge or override our local authority? Yes, it may be state law, but I am a citizen, and I am affected by this, as are every other home in California, and I find it appalling. It's dangerous. It's obnoxious. And believe me, the residents, as I apologize to the staff, this is like monsters. And believe me, the residents, as I apologize to the staff, this is like Monster House 101 all over again. This will be a battle royal to the end. And I, I think that this is ridiculous. The four feet, I, I mean, where do these people get off? Okay, all right, are we going to have property taxes on ADUs? The ADUs, if you pile in two extra families in the two allowed ADUs, they're going to be producing seven new children to go to the local schools. So what happens to the property owner? He's pulling in $2,500 to $3,000 a month in income. Does the city get a piece of that action? Nobody's talking about that. He only has to pay one school impact fee. Well, we want to know about that. Also, I think we're getting, and so people are going to start flipping ADUs. They're going to buy our homes. And I've already been told by several people that a house with two ADUs is going to be worth more money than a regular residential. So we're going to set up like a little hotspot of flipping, flipping homes for ADUs.
Please finish up, Jennifer.
I find this bill insulting, appalling, and again, it's coming from San Francisco. And I will say by right, I don't think San Francisco's being running really well, and I think Cupertino should take it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I don't think we want to. So there's no more cards for item 10. So is there any discussion here? Does anybody?
So, yeah, I think we do need to adopt this as soon as possible because our old ordinance is void since January 1st. I would have wished this to be brought as soon, earlier. However, I sent the city attorney 15 questions after the last meeting, after I compared our ordinance with Palo Alto's ordinance. And I do hope some of those questions could be addressed. For example, Palo Alto does require deed restriction for the ADU, not only JADU. However, our ordinance only requires deed restriction for JADU. And Palo Alto ordinance also clearly specify when the deed restriction should be recorded. It should be like before the first building permit is approved. So, and also Palo Alto requires the deed to include the requirement that ADUs cannot be used for short-term rental. And I talked to a Palo Alto City Council member, this requirement was actually staff recommendation. So I assume maybe that would help with enforcement. There are, they also have a part about privacy protection for two-story ADUs, because they are allowed to go to 16 feet, so about like window positioning. So I think there are a few issues that I hope we can bring back to take a second look. Thank you.
Anything else?
I, I think I concur with all four of those points, that those, those seem to make a lot of sense. If ADUs and junior ADUs are going to be popping up, that those deed restrictions, the items that were brought up there, so definitely, I think, we need to have that on the agenda to add those, consider adding those items to our municipal code.
Hey, can the city attorney comment on this, about why? Ours is different than Palo Alto?
I'll defer to your planning staff for that.
Okay, great. Okay, planning staff.
If council has some direction for staff to look into, we can, we can definitely take that consideration for future analysis and whatnot.
No, no, I was asking why it's not, was not done in the current ordinance. I mean, I mean, did you guys look at other cities' ordinances when you were crafting ours?
We did. And again, we, you know, our planning staff and the city attorney's staff did, you know, coordinate with us, too. And again, we, we did receive Councilmember Chow's questions, and we looked at it, and there are some disagreements between us and Palo Alto on certain items, particularly the privacy, required privacy, you know, protection measures and whatnot for second-story ADUs. For example, we don't even allow second-story ADUs.
Right, exactly.
It looks like conversion. So in many ways, we're actually more restricted than Palo Alto. So, and again, we, we just, we did the, what we, what we thought was a bare minimum to conform to the state, and so we went that direction.
All right. One more item they have there is whether protected trees can be removed to make place for ADU. So.
So as, as we discussed this week, the, the protected tree ordinance is still, has to be adhered to. So if someone wants to put an ADU in their rear yard, and you have to remove 24-inch DBH oak tree, coast live oak tree, to do that, they would still have to apply for a tree removal permit. And that's stated in the ordinance itself. We, we try not to be redundant within the municipal code. If it's stated in one section, it doesn't have to be stated in another. I, I think many of these issues, in terms of the, I hate to use the word redundancy, but I will, can be done with a frequently asked questions sheet, which we're working on currently, and also ADU webpage, which we're currently working on, too, this week.
For example, deed restriction for ADUs, that's pretty significant, right? How, how, we are not requiring deed restriction for ADUs? Have we considered that?
We, we, again, the state only requires the ADU for the JADU. You know, we could go, when we go back this week, we can look at the, whether we want to add ADUs as a covenant requirement, too, as well. And that's something we could consider.
Okay. Oh, one more thing that's important. Maybe I did, I read the government code. The government code section actually allows the city to identify certain areas that ADUs are not allowed due to traffic concerns or other safety reasons. But then, it's just, when ADUs are allowed in certain area where you would need to allow streamlining, I, I think that's the intent of the new law. Is that true?
So it would take a full analysis by our Cupertino sanitary to identify those areas. And Cupertino sanitary has not identified any areas where sewer capacity is not deficient, or is deficient. And again, for non, for streamlined ADUs, even if it is, we can't deny it based upon capacity. But again, this Cupertino sanitary district has not defined areas that are deficient for ADUs, non-streamlined.
For example, I think it talks about traffic also. For example, if we have a development that's 1,000 units, and under this law, they would be allowed to add 25% units, that's 250 units, on top of the 1,000 units that's already zoned for. And then that's adding quite a bit of traffic and sewage usage. Could we set a certain standard so that for areas that's already very high in density, we don't allow ADUs?
Okay, so for that last portion of the state bill that you have referred to, those, multi-family ADUs are considered streamlined units, and we can't deny a streamlined unit based upon traffic.
What I mean is, can we identify areas that already is traffic challenged and the sewage challenged? In fact, I think certain area already are pretty, sewage is up to capacity, then could we identify those area? I mean, are we, question is, are we allowed to identify areas that ADUs cannot be allowed?
So with every building permit application, Cupertino sanitary district has review authority over each and every building permit application for ADUs. And so during each application, they can review as whether that area where the ADU is proposed is, has the necessary sewer capacity.
But if it's streamlined, it won't be reviewed. So my question, according to the government code, is whether the city is allowed to identify a certain area that we think is already, or up to capacity in traffic and sewage or other infrastructure, so that we don't allow 25% of ADU in that area? Can we allow only 10%? Set a lower limit or not allow it? According to, to the government code. I'm not talking about individual applications.
Okay. So again, the 25% limit is, or those are streamlined ADUs. Those are part of the multi-family internal conversions. So we, you know, as stated earlier, that we can't, we can't cap those at 10%.
The government code actually reads, if the ADUs are one, up to 25%, we are required to streamline, which means, which implies we can set a lower limit on certain areas of the city. It has to be streamlined, but it says up to 25%. I think that means we are allowed to set lower limit.
You know, with the advice of the city attorney's office that has coordinated with planning, their advice and their interpretation of the state bills has been that we cannot cap the 25, we cannot cap below 25% for the multi-family conversions of ADUs.
Even an area that's already very high density?
Correct.
That's not how I read the code, though.
So, and the city council would not determine the sewage capacity anyway. That's not up to us. The other question I had, Deb and I were at the West Valley Mayor's meeting, where the county fire chief spoke. So does county fire have any say in saying, oh, by the way, you can't do a four-foot setback? It's, it's too dangerous?
Yes, they, you know, ADUs do have to meet fire, health and safety codes, and building codes, and fire codes as well. Correct.
Because there wasn't concern expressed, especially if there were ADUs backing up to each other, four feet from the property line, about fires jumping like roof to roof. So I don't know what authority they have. I mean, it's kind of, the state law's conflicting with their own.
Well, fire department can, you know, fire and building codes can't determine the types of materials, you know, anything that's, for example, if you're building a livable space that's within five feet of a property line, you have to, you have to build it with a certain type of fire-rated material. I want to say it's a one-hour firewall, don't quote me on that. But it's, it's separate than to say building a livable area that's 10 feet from the property line. So they do have that authority. And just to remind you that, even with our old ordinance, you can build an accessory structure as close as three, as three feet.
Three feet?
Yeah.
Oh, for a shed?
For a shed, or even for an ADU, too. That's, that's always been our ordinance.
Ah, okay. I didn't realize it was for, also for ADU. I knew it was for sheds.
Detached ADUs.
Okay. Okay, anything else before we conduct the second reading?
So, you know, Councilman Chow said that there's a list of 15 items. I think we should see the list of 15 items. And if, if planning has looked at them and put comments down, you know, those should be included. But we really do rely on the planning commission. So I would think that these important topics, whether we do or don't have the authority to, to actually do something, but the mere fact that Palo Alto has been able to find that they can do things, I think it should go to the planning commission, each item, and then they make the recommendation to us. Because what I'm hearing here is, wow, these things are of interest, but we don't have the answers in sufficient detail. So again, I'm asking that the list of at least 15 items that has been submitted, I'd like to see them along with the answers, but I would like it to go through the planning commission, so that they can really be the one to scrub it first.
So you, you do have a copy of the 15 questions and answers?
Right. That was provided by the city attorney.
And then I believe Councilmember Sinks has a comment. And then I am recommending that you adopt, go to the second hearing and be done.
Second reading, not second hearing.
Second reading, sorry. Second reading.
Okay. Councilman Sinks.
Yeah, I find it stunning, once again, how much time we spend trying to inhibit housing in the city. And I would like to make the motion with the second reading that we move this forward.
Sure, I'll second that. Can we do the second reading, Madam City Clerk?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 20 dash 2199, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Cupertino, amending Chapter 19 point 112, accessory dwelling units, Chapter 19 point 20, permitted conditional and excluded uses in agricultural and residential zones, and Chapter 9 point, 19 point 08, definitions.
So I move that ordinance number, oops, do I have it here? Thank you.
20 dash.
2199. Be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
So I do want to respond to Rod's comment. Can I do that?
Yeah, after we vote.
Then I cannot respond after we vote, right? I think it's important for us to understand, we do want to support housing, however, trying to make sure that areas that's already heavy, without infrastr, but also we need to make sure that we don't go over our infrastructure in certain areas of the city that's already overloaded. So trying to do that.
Find a place in the city where we don't have a lot of traffic. I mean.
So, and also, we want to make sure that our residents' interests are protected. So trying to tighten our code is not inhibition for housing, it's looking out for the residents.
I mean, frankly, there are a lot of people that would like to see more housing in this area. I think that the ability to build on their own property, which state law allows, would be a terrific way for us to, to build new housing and improve the equity that people have in their own properties.
I proposed last time we should have pre-approved the plans for ADUs. I think that's a good way to make sure that we have.
You just spent 15 minutes trying to inhibit ADUs in the city.
This is not trying to inhibit, this is trying to make sure we have good ADUs, and then we also help to make them favorable. If we have good ADUs, people would want more of them. But if you have ADUs that invade on people's privacy, people don't like it, then we are, we, we will have less of them, right?
Councilmember Chow.
Continuing the narrative that this council is famous for. We do not like housing. We don't want to build it.
I would dispute what you're saying, Councilman Sinks.
I would dispute that, too.
But in any case, we are trying to comply with state law. There are issues in the law that many people don't like, including the lack of parking and the setbacks, but we have to comply with state law. So the motion's been made, the second reading's been conducted, so can we vote on it?
We have a second.
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
We are on to public hearings.
So was that an enactment? Or was?
No, I'm sorry. Let me finish this. I move that ordinance number.
20 dash 2199.
21 dash.
2199.
2199. Be enacted.
Second.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I always forget to enact things. Okay. Okay, item 11. This is to consider approving a new 155-room, seven-story hotel, 24-hour operation with underground parking, event meeting rooms, a ground-floor restaurant with separate bar, and a rooftop lounge with separate bar. By demolishing, demolishing a commercial building with an area of 8,323 square feet, city actions would include general plan amendments to consider amending table LU1 by increasing the development allocation of hotel rooms to 155 hotel rooms in the Homestead Special Area, and figure LU2 and policy LU23.2, including figure LU5, to allow increased heights and reduce building plane within the North Dianza Gateway specific to this development. City permits would include development, architectural and site approval, and use permit. A development agreement is also proposed. Application number GPA 201801, DP 201801, ASA 201802, DA 201801, U 201802, EA 201803. U twenty eighteen oh two, EA twenty eighteen oh three, applicant Shirley Quoc, Deansa Properties, location is, um, ten nine thirty-one North Deansa Boulevard. Um, assessor parcel number is three-two-six dash one zero dot, dash zero six one. This item is being continued from January twenty-first, twenty twenty. Um, okay, so can we conduct the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Ben Foo, Director of Community Development. As you call this item, received authorization from the city council last January to move forward with the proposal for the general plan amendment. With me today is John Martier, Senior Planner, and also the project manager for the project. He'll be providing with you, for you, a detailed presentation. Project applicant is here as well, in case you have any questions, and is available for a presentation as well. So with that, I will hand it over to John for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Again, John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. And yes, I'm here to present the, uh, Deansa Hotel, uh, their general plan amendment application. So again, the subject is, uh, the scope of the hotel is a hundred fifty-five room, seven-story hotel with twenty-four hour operations. Uh, there are three general plan amendments requested. Uh, the first is increasing development allocation of hotel rooms, uh, currently within the Homestead Special Area. There is no, um, allocation number for hotels, so we would be, um, resupplying that allocation pot with a hundred fifty-five rooms. Um, also increase heights and reduce building plane, uh, within the North Deansa Gateway specific to this development and specific, uh, to this parcel and to any hotel development on this parcel. Um, and as the mayor had mentioned in the introduction to the project, the city permits would include, uh, development, uh, permit, architectural site approval and use permits as well as a development agreement, um, as proposed, is also proposed. So where are we in the process of this? Um, so this went through the gatekeeper process, which is a general plan amendment authorization. Actually went through the gatekeeper process twice, uh, once in the summer of twenty seventeen. And when the scope of the project, um, had changed, it came back in, uh, January of, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, again, back to council. And so as it went through, um, as it was approved by council at that time, um, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, uh, the, the application was revised for the general plan amendment and, and the development permits, et cetera. And thus we went through the city review of the application materials, which include, you know, CEQA, the MND, uh, any technical reports that are attached to that, um, design review of the project, the project review, and review through the various departments. Um, we went through hearings such as ERC back in August, uh, then the planning commission in December tenth, and then also, and here we are right now, city council, uh, the very last before, um, where the project could be approved. So the project location, um, just, it's about a little less than quarter mile north of Highway two eighty along North Deansa Boulevard and about a block south of the, uh, of the, um, city limit line with the city of Sunnyvale. Um, you see it's surrounded by a mix of uses within the Homestead Special Area and specifically with the North Deansa Gateway area. Uh, you do have a hotel to the south, um, and the, um, Homestead Square to the west as, as well as high-density apartments, the AVR to the, um, to the east as well as more high-density housing and condominiums and townhomes, uh, to the southwest of the project site. Again, the project data is a hundred fifty-five rooms on a one-point-two-nine acre site. Uh, the floor is approximately slightly north of a hundred thirty-one, a hundred thirty-thousand square feet with, uh, two hundred and seventeen parking spaces, um, mo- the vast majority of them, you know, underground, four stories underground parking underneath the hotel. So again, as stated earlier, uh, we're looking to, uh, the applicant's looking to increase the hotel room allocation, a hundred fifty-five rooms, um, increase the maximum allowable height, which is forty-five in this area, to approximately eighty-five feet, and a reduction in the building slope line, uh, which is, in course of the general plan, uh, one-to-one from the curb line, um, and the closest points would be point eight to one and point two-two to one. And again, the variation of that, all those closest points around here and here, has to do with the fact that in front of this portion of the hotel, you do have a turning lane, so the curb actually changes in that area. Uh, within this middle, we'll talk a little about, little, little bit later on in the presentation, uh, the slope line is, does approach closer to the one-to-one, but not quite there. So, uh, just want to show you a quick overview of what the applicant had submitted back in twenty seventeen in comparison to what has been submitted, um, a year ago. As you can see, the design of the hotel has, has changed pretty drastically, uh, back in twenty C, twenty seventeen, you have a shorter hotel, um, with the same amount of rooms, uh, that was, what was a hundred fifty-six, now a hundred fifty-five. Um, but the architecture, um, in staff's opinion is not as, not as nice as it is with, uh, the, the current proposal. It's a little, little boxier, uh, not a lot of variation facade. There's a definite front facade and definite rear and side facades, whereas the, we'll talk a little more later, what you have right now proposed is, 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 um, a design that treats every side equally, little more depth, certain portions, and a little more variation in the, in the design. So, uh, let's focus a little bit on the site plan architectural design. Um, the applicant had come in, uh, and worked with staff on the design, um, although the, the original, um, application was very nice, in, in staff's opinion, uh, we did try to work with the applicant and worked successfully with the applicant to, to come in, as well as with our, um, architectural consultant to come with, with the design that we thought would meet the, uh, city's, um, standards for, uh, this type of development. So really quick, um, one of the things that staff wanted to work with the applicant on is activation of the frontage, and this is also, um, within our general plan that we want to have active street frontage along arterial roads, or really any road that, um, is mixed use. Um, and so the applicant had done a, a pretty good job with putting the active uses along the frontage, such as the restaurant, um, even having a, um, even having pedestrian-only access right here along the, along the street, having the gym right here, and also certain meeting rooms all along the front of here to give that activation, rather than having these areas be, um, the back of house operations. We also, um, see that the applicant has provided a variation of facade depth, and, and so it's very nice, it gives a little bit of characteristics and personality to this building. Uh, reduced balconies and massings. Uh, one of the things that's unique about this hotel is the fact that it's included balconies as part of its design. Uh, many of the hotels you see being developed in the, um, in the, in the South Bay are, um, don't have balconies. And so this is a, a very unique feature that the architect and the applicant have worked with, uh, to, to include, to make this hotel stand out amongst the others that are currently being built in the, in the South Bay, or at least in the area. Um, when the, the first round of design review came in, the balconies were, were quite large, and so we worked with the applicant to reduce the size of the balconies, to also reduce the massing, where the balconies aren't necessarily overwhelming the facade, rather basically an architectural feature amongst the facade. And the rooftop amenity, so when the, um, applicant came back in January of twenty nineteen, uh, through the gatekeeper process, it didn't have the rooftop amenity, rooftop bar. Um, and that was a request from council to put some type of rooftop amenity, a rooftop bar, and, um, that was actually part of the community, um, benefits, uh, was to have this amenity. And so as you can see, um, it's nicely set back from the, the roof line as requested by council that, that would be. And so, um, as stated earlier, every facade, um, every side of the building is treated almost like a primary facade. Each one is, is, um, has, is, 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 is treated with, with fine materials, with, with, uh, with care, with, with, um, variation in depth, and so, and what I, what I mean by that is you could probably turn this hotel in any direction and it would fit nicely along North Deansa Boulevard. So with the rear facade, really is similar to the front facade in many, in many aspects. Um, and you can see that the high-quality materials and design, you can see that the emergency access stairs right here, um, is treated as the same as any, any other primary focus or primary focal point of the design, where you have a, the view of the, uh, of the valley at the, at the upper levels right here. And again, uh, the floor plan for the, for the bottom floor, again, we talked about active use along the front, as you can see, the floor plan, the back of house uses are away from the street, um, not visible from the public right away, where the, the active uses like the restaurant and the gym are all in the front. And as well as the traffic flow, uh, when folks come in to, to check into the hotel, they are not queuing up along Deans Boulevard, rather they'd have to come in through here and, and check in their car, and then if they do have car to park, it would be parked through here, uh, the entrance and the, uh, parking is, is indeed, uh, along the rear. So the development agreement, um, is, is part of the, uh, general plan amendment process, and so what the, um, what the developer agreed to do, um, back in January was to do a one-time community funding of five hundred thousand dollars. Um, reduce costs for shuttle service for hotel guests and residents, uh, to the, uh, major employee hubs and, uh, San Francisco and San Jose International Airports. And as, as discussed, rooftop amenity. Um, also, um, free use of meeting rooms, uh, for, um, the city of Cupertino and Cupertino Schools, uh, for twelve days out of the year. Um, and as part of that package of the meeting rooms, it would be a reduced cost for, uh, food and, and ancillary services, um, such as presentation tools and whatnot, uh, to be given to the, um, to those using those rooms. And to maintain a minimum hotel standard, so this would be, as described in the DA, this is supposed to be an upscale hotel. As part of this process, we have the mitigated negative deck, initial study was completed and found that a mitigated negative declaration was, um, was, um, was prepared and was necessary. Um, we found some less significant impacts, um, to air quality, biological resources, cultural tribal resources, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, temporary noise levels and utilities. So this, uh, this item was brought to the planning commission on December tenth. Um, no changes to the project were recommended at the time. Um, the planning commission recommended approval, uh, four-oh with Sexina being absent. City council was originally scheduled to hear this item on January twenty-first, uh, twenty twenty, however, this was continued to today's date, uh, to adequately respond to some late arriving CEQA comments. Uh, so, um, this, the outreach for this, uh, for this project was done through citywide noticing, so every, um, every property owner was, uh, should have received a postcard to notify them of the, uh, of the, uh, community meetings, or the public hearing items, rather. Um, public comments, uh, we received ten as, as, as of the production of the staff report. Um, two in support, eight non-support. Um, I, I did make a, a small mistake in the staff report saying that two were of non-support, uh, but rather it was eight and two and eight, so I apologize for that, um, that mistake. Um, of the non-support, uh, there are various, um, non-support items for the CEQA analysis, uh, the general plan, uh, some folks in non-support felt that the general plan shouldn't, shouldn't be changed. Uh, issues with parking and traffic, and, um, some folks felt that tearing down the, the existing, um, uh, Goodyear tires would, would, would affect our retail. While those in support felt that this could actually help our retail, um, with bringing visitors to the city that would shop in our shops and stores and restaurants and whatnot. It's a good, um, source of TOT, as was supported by our, um, fiscal consultant, and, um, the community benefits, um, really supported the general plan amendment. So conclusion, uh, that the, that staff's recommendation of the city council conduct the public hearing, consider planning commission's recommendation and adopt a mitigated negative declaration, uh, approve the general plan amendment, development permit, architectural site approval, use permit, and introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance approving a development agreement. And that concludes my, well, next, excuse me, next step is city council, March seventeenth, twenty twenty, uh, for second reading of the ordinance if, if council does.
Wait, can you go back to the previous one?
Sure.
I guess I don't understand introduce and waive the first reading, what, what does that mean?
So development agreements are technically an ordinance, so they're treated as an ordinance like, like we did the ADU ordinance, where you have a first reading and a second reading.
Okay, so why would you waive the first reading? I guess I'm not understanding something here.
It's just read by title only.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, very good, okay. So before we bring it back to council, let's do the public comment. I have two cards, Paige Fenny followed by Lisa Warren, welcome Paige.
Good evening. My name is Paige Fenny and I am here on behalf of the Labor's International Union of North America, Local Union Number Two Seventy, also known as LAUNA, concerning the MND for this project. As stated in our written comments, it is evident that the MND is inadequate and fails as an informational document because there is a fair argument that the project may have unmitigated adverse environmental impacts. The city should have prepared an environmental impact report and the city council can therefore not adopt the MND. If an EIR has not been prepared for a non-exempt project, but substantial evidence in the record supports a fair argument that the project may result in significant adverse impacts, an EIR must be prepared. Agencies can issue a negative declaration and avoid preparing an EIR in limited circumstances, only if there is not even a fair argument that the project will have a significant environmental effect. Under this fair argument standard, an EIR is required if any substantial evidence in the record indicates that a project may have an adverse environmental effect. This standard creates a low threshold favoring environmental review through an EIR. Here, there's substantial evidence of a fair argument that the project will have significant adverse impacts and the threshold for environmental review through an EIR is therefore met. First, LAUNA's concerns regarding health risks posed by the project's formaldehyde emissions are based on the expert analysis and opinions of industrial hygienist and engineer Francis Offerman. Mr. Offerman calculated that future employees of the project will be exposed to a cancer risk from formaldehyde of approximately sixteen point four cancers per million, exceeding the Bay Area Air Quality Management District's CEQA significance threshold for airborne cancer risk of ten per million. Placework states that there is no substantial evidence that the project will involve the use of materials that contain formaldehyde and levels that pose a risk to human health because the project will meet the requirements for formaldehyde, as specified in the CARB air toxins control measure for composite wood. However, Mr. Offerman's analysis and significance finding of the project's health risk from formaldehyde assumes that the project will use materials that are compliant with this measure. Second, LAUNA's concerns regarding noise impacts posed by the project's construction are based on the expert analysis and opinions of Derek Watry. Mr. Watry's comments identified a potentially significant, significant noise impact posed by the project's five stages of construction. Regardless of whether the city and its staff interpret the city's municipal code as an average noise limit, level limit, and not a maximum noise limit, Mr. Watry's analysis provides substantial evidence of a fair argument that the project's construction will create significant noise impacts on nearby properties and should be analyzed in an EIR. These experts' comments provide substantial evidence of a fair argument that the project will have significant adverse impacts and therefore overcome CEQA's low threshold favoring environmental review through an EIR. We respectfully request the city council refuse to adopt the MND. Thank you.
Okay, next is Lisa Warren, followed by Jennifer Griffin, welcome Lisa.
Thank you. So, um, I know this has been hashed, rehashed, and I have to say, the design of the building has improved immensely since the beginning, that I'm happy about, but you also know that I have concerns about past community surveys who clearly state what people think about height and setbacks in this city, and I know your argument may be, well, this is the perfect place for that. I just don't want it to be forgotten what we really are trying to do if you're trying to meet the answers from what the survey said. And that would be not to increase the height and not to reduce the building plane. The building plane in this case is more of a thing for me because it's so close to the street and there's no trees in front like there is at the Kimco's Hotel. Um, I, I just, I know this is going to go nowhere, but I'm not, I wasn't okay with not saying this. Um, and I believe some of you may agree, continue to agree. And another thing I think should be considered is if you're encouraging, because initially I don't think that they had the rooftop bar and lounge, that was encouraged by a council member and now it's there, I would ask that you, in any case with things like this, that night, uh, dark sky be respected because the city is undergoing a study on what to do about dark sky and bird safety. So it would be a shame if things like this got put into place without considering that and what's being studied. Um, so I hope there is some, there has been some, what's the word I'm looking for? Consideration for that rooftop bar and lounge and that it won't create a dark sky issue or bird safety. Um, I also, in gen- I- I also, I have heard it said by someone, and I tend to agree, and I don't know how you go back and do this, I am not a fan of the term "community benefits," nor were people answering that survey years ago. It's overused, and I've, someone mentioned that at times these community benefits in these development agreements are, seem inequitable. Someone follows the rules and they give community benefits of a greater value than someone who gets all these extra things. And I certainly wish that we weren't doing increased height and reduced building plane. Maybe one would be considered, but not the double whammy. And John and Mr. Architect, it's a good-looking building, it's just, I had to say what I had to say.
Thank you, Lisa. Last, we have Jennifer Griffin, welcome Jennifer.
Good evening, city council, I've heard a lot of, I like Mr. Architect, that's a good name. Anyway, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and yes, the building has improved tremendously view-wise. I am, if we're not going to have trees in front of it, I think that there's a big problem. We had trees before. If you're not familiar with North and South Deansa Boulevard, we really don't have a good street tree presentation down that road. Stevens Creek Boulevard, we do everything possible to make sure we keep our trees up, we've all dedicated years to that. But North and South Deansa Boulevard is a different kettle of fish, and I'm really, really disturbed by some of the straight-up-and-down edifices that San Jose is currently building on their corner of South Deansa Boulevard. They are so close to the street. I am really surprised that they even did that considering they were next to Cupertino, but they think that they have some part of an undeclared urban village down there, well, we're working on that. But I really would like to have something down, up and down Highway 9, whatever you call it, that looks consistent, but it's not consistent. It's like hodgepodge. There are trees somewhere, you know, there, it looks really good in some places, there's other places, you know, like where the San Jose buildings are, there's no room for trees, okay? They've already, and by 85, they put in some sort of monster buildings there which there's nothing in yet. There's no room for trees. I really hope Cupertino isn't going to perpetuate that. We don't have that on Stevens Creek Boulevard. We, even with all the battles over Valco, we won't have that at Valco. There will be a 35-foot setback at Valco. I have declared those games open. There will be a 35-foot setback on Stevens Creek Boulevard if that is the last thing we do. But I would really, really like to have more trees down Deansa Boulevard. I think it looks kind of hodgey-podgey, and I will tell you too, I'm not a big fan of doing the desert landscaping and where they did it over by the Donut Wheel because we used to have beautiful green lawns there, and now it looks kind of scabby-looking. I'm sorry, it really, it does. So, I think we need to step up our landscaping up and down Deansa Boulevard. Some parts of it look really cool, other parts are kind of like, we're not sure if we're in Arizona or not. But yes, and let's have setbacks on the front of the building, and let's don't bring it to the curb, we don't need any more San Jose and Cupertino. But the building looks great, if we can keep the heights down, that would be good. But I know that Mr. Architect and the owner and the city, and the city architects can do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Okay, very good. That's all the public comments, so we can bring it back to city council now. Who would like to go first? How about we start from the right this time? John?
I'll follow up.
Okay, Darcy.
Yeah, so, I actually am the council member that lives closest to this location, not too far away in fact. And I think it's been a process of a number of years that we've been considering this application. I think that at first, the height of it really did seem to loom a lot more, but that was under the prior architectural design, and I think that the applicant has really worked with the city over the years. I don't remember exactly when the first submission was made, I want to say 2015 perhaps? I don't think it was 17. It's been a while since we saw that original design that you had placed, John, next to the current design. But yeah, no, I think that, you know, being in the neighborhood and considering this over the years, it has actually been something of a process. You know, people say that it takes a while to kind of get used to density and height. And when I first heard the notion that, well, this is an area that you have a shopping center, you have an apartment complex, you have somewhat more dense housing in the area, it would be fine to put something, you know, taller and with a reduced setback there. I mean, I was a little bit antipathetic to the notion at first, but I mean, just considering it over the years, I think that it has gotten much more, much more palatable. I do think that, given the current palette, the color scheme, and the materials that are being used for the hotel, it would be a welcome addition to the general neighborhood. With regard to some of the issues that have been brought up by the public, I understand that setback and height are real concerns. This is a 1.3-acre space, however, so I think that if you are looking at height, you almost necessarily have to be looking at exceptions to the building plane as well. So, it's not that big of a parcel, and I know that over time, we had initially said, well, can you do something about the Cupertino Inn? And that actually took about an 18-month process where I think council actually asked council member Sinks to go and have a discussion with one of your partners in the ownership of the hotel. So, that came back another year and a half. It's been a multi-year process. I mean, it's been, I'd say, pushing on half a dozen years at this point since we got that initial set of recommendations. I think one thing that we do need to consider in this area of Cupertino is the green space and the ability to meet and congregate in a recreational fashion. The only park that exists north of 280 right now in that area of Cupertino is Franco Park, and that's not too far away on the other side of the shopping center. I think that, you know, what we can be doing to work with our Parks and Recreation Department as well as outreach from the city, I've been encouraging of our Parks and Recreation Commission to work with stakeholders as well as the public, try to figure out what we can be doing with regard to things like pocket parks. I think with the owner here, at least joint owner of two properties that are joining each other, maybe we can think about elements that we can put in, even if it's something like a small table, you know, with one of those, you know, chessboards on top in that general vicinity that helps to kind of open up the space to, you know, the public usage. I think it could make it for, you know, inviting set of elements as well. So, I appreciate that it's not a vast, you know, amount of space, but it is, I think, sufficient to start thinking about those types of elements. I do have some follow-up questions with regard to what has been done on the record with the formaldehyde as well as the noise, and what was the third element from that particular public comment?
Birds.
Was it birds?
No.
I don't think it was birds.
He's right, bird safety.
Oh, it was bird safety? Okay. And so, with regard to the formaldehyde, I think that, if I was following the dialogue correctly, based upon some asserted allowances, their analysis, the public commentary's analysis was something along the lines of 16, you know, per million, and their assertion is that it's 10 per million. But I think we were using a different metric for determining how much laminate flooring would be acceptable. I mean, what's the, do we need a commitment from the applicant in order to get us some peace of mind here? Have the calculations been done if, you know, we were to adopt the less voluminous standard for using that type of flooring?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, we do have Terry McCracken here from Placeworks, whose firm did do the initial study and subsequent analysis and did respond to those late comments from the firm and whatnot. She's in the audience right now. If you'd like to ask her.
I would, if that would be okay with regard to.
I have exactly the same question.
Yeah, welcome.
I mean, the standard of 10 in a million was adopted a few years ago by the air district. It really means 10 excess deaths due to cancer in a population of a million. So, yeah, I'm interested to know if we have the option of asking or even strongly asking if these non-formaldehyde or ultra-low formaldehyde compounds can be adopted for this project.
Okay, welcome. Can we respond to that?
Yeah, hi, I'm Terry McCracken with Placeworks, I worked on the MND. I think the response, and you all have a copy of the 50-page response to comment letter on this, is the type of building material for the purposes of SEQA is speculative. We don't get to that level of detail in the SEQA document as to what materials are going to be used for the actual construction. And so, that, the comment, the disagreement that we have is that's not substantial evidence, it's just speculation. So, anything to do with the type of building material that would be used, you'd probably want to work with your applicant and talk about that because Cal Green and the other parts of the building code do regulate the amount of formaldehyde, and you couldn't exceed what was in the code, and that's already determined to set the limit for indoor air quality safety.
But what happens if that, the air quality that resulted was in fact 16.4 versus the standard of 10?
If it did exceed that, then you'd be in violation of the building code.
Thank you.
John, would you like to speak?
I did receive the letter.
Sorry, could I recommend just a process here?
Sure.
And I think on the inside of your agenda, we have sort of the procedure, and, sir, we would like to hear from you, of course, but I just want to follow the hearing procedures that we have established. So, there's the staff report, and then we have the applicant presentation, and then members of the public speak, and then we'd have response. So, I think, you know.
Well, we blew that one, I mean, we already had the public input.
And I'm sorry, I was distracted at the time. So, I think, you know, we can, we can.
What do you want to do, then?
Yeah, just tell us.
So, I would recommend we go back to, do you have a presentation for this item? Or was it the staff's presentation?
We have a small presentation. It got skipped over, but we were fine.
Are you referring to page 5?
No, I'm sorry, I'm just talking about the flow chart for hearings here.
Oh, okay, and that's.
So, what I would recommend is, maybe take a pause and have the applicant's presentation, then continue public comment.
Where is the flow chart you are referring to?
It's, oh, yeah, I did not see that either, okay.
In the back?
Okay, John, why don't you make your presentation before you answer.
It's just sort of a city's practice, so.
To be fair to the mayor and the council, we have made numerous presentations before, and so I could, this is a continued hearing, so I could understand them, assuming that we were done. I did receive the letter with, that talks about the bird strikes, the noise, and the formaldehyde. I will say, and I'd like to put it on the record, that this type of hotel, the quality that it is, it's a concrete hotel, I don't think they're talking about the plywood that the hotel would be made out of, it's, there's not plywood that is there, it's steel and concrete. But I think they're talking about the inside. Many hotels use fiberglass for their tubs, their showers. This type of hotel will not have that, so you will not have the fumes, the off-gassing of the fiberglass. The baseboard, I can tell you, will not be particle board, but will be real wood, which is an upper grade, and so you're not going to have the adhesive that will off-gas. And the furniture will be generally, you know, whole wood as opposed to particle board. And so, a hotel like this will use wool carpets generally, and so you're not going to have the off-gassing of the plastic carpets, they call it nylon. But that is for the record, really, for the SEQA record. And I have an architect that can talk to you about the hotel briefly, and he's here, and I'm finished.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Bill Winkleman. I got the privilege of working with John on this project, and I will tell you upfront that it was a great pleasure to work with him because he kept, he let us do what we wanted to pretty much. So, with that in mind, I would like to address a few of the issues, if I can dig it out here. A few of the issues that we take into consideration when we're designing a building like this. And in the industry these days, there are a number of initiatives that are aimed at making not only the building better for the building, but making the building better for the people that occupy it. Their initiative is like a well-building concept, which has to do with access to air, light, peace of mind, quiet in the rooms, those kinds of things. There's biophilic design, which allows for having a lot of natural items around you. Would you pull up the floor plan? Let's go to the second floor in particular. I think you can understand, the first floor is primarily glass along the front. There is planting, we are planting, there's a strip of, yep, okay, so let's start here and then we'll go back down and talk about the trees. So, in the front, actually, do you have, this is, I think, the third, yeah, go to the second? Okay, there we go. So, one of the features of the hotel is you'll notice that there are a series of planters, there's a green space in the center in the back, and there's a terrace in the front, and there are a variety of planters that we've colored green in these images. Those correspond to the corugated cortein that is on the facade of the building. The purpose of the corrugated cortein is to provide an airspace that's actually offset, John, would you flip to the, any one of the renderings, I guess?
I'm sorry, I don't know what cortein is, maybe some other people do.
Cortein is a steel that rusts and then stops rusting because it forms an iron oxide on the surface, prevents air and water from getting to the surface of the iron, and so it stops aging. If you scratch it or dent it, the process begins again, and then it essentially is a self-healing material that you don't have to ever do anything to. The county building downtown is an example of cortein, there are numerous other examples around that I can show you. We like it a lot. It's 100% recyclable when it's done, but it will last a very, very long time. The other material, would you go to the facade picture? Almost anyone, okay, that's fine. So, this is the south facade that faces the Cupertino Inn. You get a little bit of oblique from our right-side shot of this as you come off the freeway or you're coming down Deansa. So, starting in order from the right side of the hotel, you can see there's a glass facade, then there's sort of a solid red, then there's sort of the variegated red and the solid red again. The variegated red is the corrugated cortein that stood off the building. The intent of all of this is that we plan to have climbing plants to grow up through that, I've checked with some of our landscape architects, and they tell me we can do this easily, to grow up that facade. So, the intent here really is that ultimately what you see is the variegated red, and all of the concrete will ultimately be covered with vines. That's our hope. We're not going to promise you that because sometimes things don't work out, but we, that's sort of our goal. The other point of the planters is that the cortein always dumps into the planter because the cortein, until it ages, say for a period of two to three years, will off, it will run off some rust. So, we're going to capture all of that in these planters so it doesn't stain the concrete, doesn't stain the floors, doesn't wreck the rest of the building. The darker metal you see is zinc. We're going to use a darker zinc, and it is used sparingly because it's expensive. Again, we're going to use solid zinc, again, 100% recyclable, never needs to be painted, never needs any touch-up. never needs any touch-up or service, needs occasionally to be cleaned like the whole facade will be. And there's concrete, which is board-formed concrete with some subtle trim treatments, which I can get into if you're interested, and glass. And that's basically the exterior of the building. So, we have, except for washing of the windows, you have essentially a zero-maintenance building that should age really quite gracefully for about 50 years or probably more. We've used several kinds of glass. We talked about, you talked about the balconies earlier. One of the main purposes of the balconies, particularly on this south-facing facade, is to provide shade to the windows to decrease or eliminate as much as we can heat gain from the facade. So, we have this on the south, which, and the downstairs is completely covered. The west, we have deeper balconies, these are all about six feet deep, the ones in the back are about eight feet deep, and we will have more treatments than that on the west side because that's always the problem child. And then insofar as trees are concerned, we're showing trees on all these planters. We think we can get a nice grouping to soften this. And there are, actually, we had planned trees on the De Anza side. There is a landscape strip between the sidewalk, if I'm not mistaken, there are trees there now, aren't there? I think there are trees there now, we're not planning to remove them. So, if anything, we would add to them, areas that we have the possibility. One of the other comments that we got during the planning phase was about bird-friendly glass, so we are absolutely planning to use that. There are a number of technologies that are getting better and better, our favorite being the one that puts ultraviolet textures within the glass that are invisible to us but are very visible to the birds. Something on the order of, it prevents something on the order of 90% of the bird strikes. The glass manufacturers are in the process of developing that process, and as they develop it for the various colors, then they get it certified, and that's the type of glass we'll be using. And then there was concern about dark sky. I'm a, I wouldn't say amateur astronomer, but very much interested in astronomy, and we will absolutely have a non-glare, dark sky compliant building. A few of the features of the building itself, and then I'll stop because I'm sure this is starting to get boring. So, one of the ideas of the building was that almost any place you are inside the building, you can see outside. So, for example, John, would you go to the second floor plan's fine, second or third? So, in the corridor, so pick yourself a spot in any one of the corridors, the, as John Riley pointed out, both of the stairwells are solid glass. Well, I'd say solid glass, but they're all glazed, and the doorway into the stairwell will also be glass, fire-rated but still visible. So, almost any place in the corridor with a couple of exceptions, you can turn in any direction and look and see outside. So, natural light is a really important element to us, and so we've tried our best to get it as deep as we can into the building. And I think I'll stop there, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
And I'd just like to confirm, if you'd like any additional time to respond to public comments, you may, or...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we were, you were going...
Yes, so I'll just go ahead and wrap up my comments, thank the applicant as well as the consultant and our members of the public for pointing out these various issues. I'm supportive of the project, and I'd like to see it go forward. So, thanks very much. One question, what is the projected timetable for building if this happened to be, you know, entitled tonight? What's the, you know, time that you'd like to as the...
Soon as we can.
Soon as you can, okay, all right.
It's been about 10 years, but...
Well, hopefully it wouldn't be another 10 years, but, you know, okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, I'll go now. So, yeah, as Mr. Vidovic pointed out, this started long before I was on the city council or ever dreamed about running. I know there's concerns about the height, but when I saw the original building that was lower versus the current design, I think it is a worthwhile trade-off for the same number of rooms. And to be honest, we do want that TOT, transient occupancy tax, so we don't want to reduce the number of rooms. Unlike some of our neighboring cities, we are not approving massive amounts of commercial office space that brings in revenue, and TOT is an important revenue for the city. The shuttle, one thing you mentioned about the shuttle, it's something about reduced-cost shuttle, what was, what did that mean? Was that for the residents to use the shuttle that are not staying at the hotel, or what?
Yes.
Okay. So, how reduced? I mean, cheaper than Uber, or?
Well, it's...
We don't know.
The way the DA has written, it's 50% of the cost to provide that service.
Okay, that, I mean, that cost can be substantial, right? It's built into the rates of the hotel for the guests, but not for the...
Precisely, precisely.
And then Vice Mayor Paul mentioned the park. I'm thinking of a little park at Main Street, which, when it was proposed, I thought that's really small, no one's going to use it, it's actually heavily used. It would be great if there could be just a little bit of green space, maybe somewhere between Cupertino Inn and the new hotel. The next issue, and this grows out of what transpired at the Hyatt House, so they got the extra height because of first-floor retail. And now there's a restaurant there that was supposed to be the retail, it's not open to the public for breakfast, they don't serve lunch. For dinner, they say it's finger foods and drinks. And so essentially, there was not the retail for the public, and yet they still got that extra floor of height. So, I just want to be sure that this restaurant at this new hotel is actually going to be something that is open and the public could pay to use. I know, I don't think the Cupertino Inn has a restaurant, do they? I know they serve breakfast to the guests. So, could the applicant say what the plan is here?
Hi, everybody, Claudio Bono. The Cupertino Hotel do serves, we don't call it a lounge, it's a, we don't call it a restaurant, sorry, but it's a lounge. Breakfast, happy hour, and our guests can actually eat there anytime they want, they can order, everything is available for them every day.
Right, but, so for the new hotel, it will be a restaurant that's not just for the guests, right?
That is accurate.
That will be open to the public?
Even actually, right now, anybody can walk to the Cupertino Hotel and eat, that is not a problem, we welcome everybody.
Okay, so you sell breakfast to whoever wants to come in?
Absolutely, they just pay their fee, and then absolutely, they're more than welcome to.
Okay, so will this restaurant in the new hotel be open for all three meals, or just breakfast and dinner, or what?
Well, we'll still have to figure it out, the plan, but as soon as we're ready to build the hotel, I'm sure that, I mean, our aim is to make sure it's open for breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Okay, I mean, my concern is, you're getting all this extra height, which is controversial to some, and I know, and just after what happened at the other hotel, we want to, and I know Councilman Sinks had brought this up, we don't really have a definition of retail, it could be a Coke machine, and you get an extra floor.
In the development agreement, it specifically refers to the top deck up there, the bar, and it indicates the rules for us making that accessible to the public. So, it's not just the bottom, it's the top, too.
Okay, all right, wonderful. And so, in all these hearings, the number of times this has been on the agenda, I've never had, heard from a single resident of the adjoining apartment or condominium complex of any objections. So, I have to assume that it's not really going to affect them, and that they're fine with it. And also, this does not contribute to any school overcrowding, which is a good thing. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's a worthwhile project, and I will be supporting it. So, Liang, would you like to go?
Hi, I want to clarify something about setback. I remember the last time it was on the council agenda, the middle part of the setback, I, we were trying to decide it's about 1:1, and now it's 12.4, 6'4". So, just wondering, has that changed, or I remember, I might have misremembered?
No, to answer your question, the only thing that's changed about the design is the rooftop amenity. When it first came to council in January, there was no rooftop amenity, but the setbacks, the soap line has been consistent throughout, so...
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, I think the, I agree that the new design looks really good, and then you took really good care about using good material, especially birth-safe glass and dark sky, that sounds great, so we can go up and look at stars there. And I am, I would do want to confirm about the trees. It seems the site plan has about six trees along De Anza, but then some of the drawings don't have those trees. So, do, how many trees, how tall are they along De Anza?
Well, they're existing.
There, so there are existing six trees along there?
Yeah, there are trees there, we left them out of the rendering because we wanted to show the building.
Okay.
Because frankly, couldn't really see much from the first floor of the building because of the trees, so we took them out.
Great.
Maybe that wasn't the best idea, but that's what we did, but they're there.
It's good to know. So, trees along De Anza will be all preserved?
Yes.
And I see that you showed, I think, the south side of the building, there were landscaping there, but no trees, but you have trees on the second floor?
There are existing trees there as well.
There, so there are existing trees?
Again, the same reasoning, if we put all the trees in, then you wouldn't see...
Okay, so there will be trees on the ground and trees at the second floor balcony?
Yes.
Okay, then, yeah, that looks good. And another question I have is regarding the meeting rooms. So, I think one of the benefit is 12 days of meeting rooms for, I'm wondering, how big are the meeting rooms, and what are the conditions of use?
It's in the development agreement, but my recollection is, it's primarily for the schools, and it extends beyond that.
It says somewhere, for official school business, right?
It's for the schools, yeah.
It's actually also the city, it's page 15 of the development agreement, 5.1.3.
Yeah, okay. But it's only for the, okay, for schools and city official business? So, how big are these meeting rooms that you have?
We have a lot of meeting room space, in fact, that is one of the community benefits. What, do you know the footage, the total footage of the meeting space?
I think in total, 4,000.
I believe it's around 4,000.
Yeah, so we are very short on meeting space, and, but 12 days, that means one of the rooms for 12 days, or any number of rooms?
It's all, it's in the development agreement, are you talking about for the schools? It's in the, it's in the development agreement, I think it's, says meeting space.
Sorry, I didn't read that in detail, so...
It can be either individual rooms or combine all the rooms together for 12 days a year.
Okay, but only for city business, or could it be a community program that's sponsored by the city?
If it's school, or city, or charity, I would say so. If it's going to be in lieu of, you know, what a room would be rented, it's commercial business. So, you know, we're subsidizing the people who need the subsidy, which I think starts with the schools.
Yeah, I think, right, it says here, official city business purposes.
So, it can be used by, for example, like, certain community program, but like the city, for example, Sister City program. For example, some of our activities are organized by Sister City program or Rotary, and sponsored by the city, does that qualify?
Sister City, absolutely, that's...
They are not official city program, but might be sponsored by the city. So, I want to clarify, what language in, does this language in the development agreement support this kind of use?
I think that the idea is, if it's a commercial business use, it's not, it's going to be rented. If it's the school, the city, it doesn't have to have an official thing if it's something that, you know...
It doesn't have to be official, right? But the language is official city business, which is what got me confused.
We can say official and unofficial.
I would say that Sister City is official city business. The city would rent out the space, or would reserve the space.
You know, you might, you could look it up while I'm, while I'm talking, while I'm asking the questions, if you want to read the language.
I think we have city attorney here, that's why I'd like to clarify to where the city attorney...
Yeah, so the language in 5.1.3 of the DA says the city, the developer should allow the city and the Cupertino schools to use up to 100% of the project's meeting rooms on a complimentary basis for official city business purposes and for educational purposes. So, official city business is what's within the city's jurisdiction to, so it's a, so it would be the city reserving for a city, official city business, which is a broad definition.
Okay, thank you.
It just means, for instance, it's not for private gain.
Okay, yeah, great. So, another comment that the public has written to us and brought up is about the compatibility of the community benefit with the other hotel we also approved to add extra rooms. That hotel doesn't increase the height, and, or get an exception for setback, but they are paying, they, in comparison, the cash payment here is not comparable. So, I really like the project, and really want to see it happen, but then, in comparison, the two projects, I kind of felt we were, it was my first, the first project that I approved, I felt kind of stupid that I didn't know about the other project to compare, so...
Do you want an answer?
Yeah.
We went through, yes, you did vote, we went through the community benefits, and they were decided, and every project is different. And I feel that this project, you know, went through a lot to get to where it is, probably a 10-year process, and I think its location and the meeting room space that it's providing, and the rooftop deck, which is a fairly expensive item, I don't know how much it'll be used, but it's going to be magnificent, those all add up. And at one time, we talked about the money being used to pay for that top deck up there, and it's probably going to be more than the, than the fee that we're paying. So, it was something that was worked out, and you may have forgot about some of it.
Yeah, great, thank you for the explanation.
Okay, Ron?
Thank you. So, I did want to go back and, like Liang, I would have appreciated holding this at the $10,000 per room contribution. I know at the last meeting we had, I didn't have support for that. But I would like to explore the formaldehyde question a bit, and wonder if the architect could address the question of, this question a little bit.
So, I think, frankly, I think Terry would probably be better qualified to approach that, except for to say that part of our evaluation process for all materials involves off-gassing of all different kinds, and we are particularly, as a group, the group that I work with, we are particularly attuned, we do a lot of healthcare work, so we're... So we're very much in tune with good materials that are unofficial to humans as opposed to.
Great, so let, let me just ask you, since it's been raised that there are materials, John has said that, you know, he intends to use natural materials, wools and carpets, and that's, wool carpets, that sounds terrific. Are there any materials in this project that have formaldehyde that would not be in the NAF or ULEF categories?
Well, we haven't designed the interiors yet, but we would certainly not use those materials, those kinds of materials.
So to the extent that the materials had any formaldehyde, you.
It would be some, from some sort of natural process. We're not going to use any processed materials that would contain or off-gas formaldehyde, among other things, actually.
Okay, so you'd agree in writing presumably to.
Sure.
Any, any resins would be either, that had any kind of formaldehyde or, well, I guess here it's specified as NAF resins or ULEF resins, is that right?
Sure.
Okay, I mean, I, I could have concerns about these other things, but a worker that is in a building, you know, a, a, a guest that comes for a day or two is probably not the issue. The worker that is a loyal hotel employee for years, could be, right?
You just asked if he would put in writing that we know formaldehyde. I think it's, the intent of the hotel and the, what will be put in there would be of the lowest materials that would cause a problem. Even if you put a wool carpet, a lot of times the wool is interwoven with nylon for strength, and you still have a glue, you still have a glue, there are different kinds of glues.
Yeah, I know.
So you're, there is no, they have the Prop 65 signs all over, you know, when you walk into this room, you're, you're.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that, but I'm also aware that we passed Regulation 11, Rule 18, specifying a maximum of 10 in a million. So I, all I'm asking is if, if the analysis says, recommends that things could be mitigated with NAF or ULEF resins, I'm wondering if you'd agree to that.
Yes, I would agree to that, I would agree to that.
Thank you.
So, we, would we be within our rights to not issue a certificate of occupancy?
I don't think we need to go there.
If it was exceeded it?
I think the applicant's agreeing to amend the project to include those conditions.
Okay.
So I'd just like to make some general comments then. I, I really appreciate the architecture of this building. I'm impressed listening to materials to be used on the outside. I think it'll be a real amenity, and a beautiful amenity. I, I do, yeah, I mean, the, the two pictures that we had that come up of the, the one that has it aligned and this new one, really are so much different. And so I really appreciate this new plan. I very much appreciate the bar at the top. I can't wait until, I wish it was going to be ready while I was on the council, because, you know, sometimes after a council meeting, I just need to go and enjoy the beautiful hills.
I don't think it's open 24 hours, though.
But I won't be drinking formaldehyde, no, that's right, okay. So, yeah, I'm, I am, I'm appreciative of the concessions you've made. There's one other thing that I would like to bring up. And that is five dot one dot two dot three. And this is the non-hotel shuttle passengers. What do we know about the cost to transport somebody to local airports? That being, I presume, San Jose and San Francisco?
I, I don't have the answer to that. Again, I would have probably asked the hotel operator what, what he would include in, in the nightly rate as a way to, to capture that cost of a transportation.
Yeah, I mean, can you, can you help us with this? I'm trying to understand what we're talking about in, in terms of cost. If the cost is essentially ordering somebody an Uber or a Lyft, and that's a pass-through, you know, that's not exactly an amenity, right, so.
Right, well, currently, right now, I believe taxis and Ubers are charging close to $40 all to that level from the Cupertino Hotel to San Jose Airport. And an average on Uber side of about 120 all the way up to 160. So we do charge $20 for San Jose, it's a one flat fee. And sometimes up to $100 for San Francisco. So, but at the end of the day.
$100 to San Francisco?
That, that's for guests, or for non-guests.
Our SUVs are up to six people, so we do it per way.
No, I didn't say per guest, I said it's, that is the rate for guests or for non-guests?
We only do for our guests at this time.
So I'm sorry, if I, if I'm a guest in your hotel and I want to travel to the San Francisco airport, what do you charge me for that today?
It would be $100. Right now, you would pay all the way up to 160. I did it today, myself, $160, 165 to be exactly, today.
Because that's what it costs to take an Uber?
Yeah, or reg, that was a regular taxi, Uber would be the exact same, maybe $5 lower. It all depends. So we always make it affordable for our guests.
Meaning what a, what a.
Well, the price is about 165, we only charge 100. Everybody wins.
Wow, I didn't realize it was so expensive to get to SFR.
It really is, I did it today.
Well, I think the development agreement is 50% of the cost. So you are charging $100, then what's considered the cost?
No, he's charging 160, his cost is 160.
The cost is 160? Or he's saying Uber ranges from 120 to 160? What's the actual cost?
What I paid today was 165 for myself with a regular taxi.
I know, what I mean is, you are charging the hotel guest an affordable rate, that's $100.
Right.
That means you are subsidizing the hotel guest today, per ride, right?
He's, he's driving, he has a van that he uses to go to the airport, or do you just.
So how would you consider is the cost to the hotel to operate the shuttle per guest?
Right, because you're going to be charging 50% of the cost to a non-guest.
Our SUVs are on the first come, first served basis to begin with, so it, it work on a certain hours as well. This is not a 24-hour operation for the transportation.
So the DA isn't clear, maybe if it were saying 50% of the cost for the guest, then it's simpler.
Well, okay, maybe the, he's the wrong person to answer the question.
Yeah.
Look, this is supposed to be an amenity to the people that live in that area. So it says 50% of cost, who knows what cost is, but if we're charging a guest $100, I think that fair way to say is the lesser of 50% of our cost or half of what we charge the guest. So if we charge, if we're getting, I didn't know we're getting $100, I was surprised to San Francisco. But I think a lot of traffic now, so it's different than it was when you could zoom there. But if they're charging 40 for San Jose, then we'll charge 20 for, for the community that lives in that area. So half, does that sound reasonable?
Half of what you charge guests, and it is a published rate.
And the guests get us, the guests will probably get a subsidized rate, I don't know what Claudio's doing, but, you know, it's.
I think what we're doing is we're interpreting.
Can we clarify that in the DA?
Yes, well, I think the, the issue is that when it says 50% of developer's cost, it's 50% of the developer's cost to the hotel rep, to the hotel user.
Right, so that needs to be clarified.
It's 50% of the cost charged by the developer, I think is the way to interpret that.
Right, because I was looking at it the other way, that, you know, it's costing him $200 to provide that service, he's charging the guest 100, but it's not clear in the DA.
Can we clarify that?
So we can say 50% of what we charge.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right.
I would just point out that Councilmember Willie has not had an opportunity.
Right, I know, we are not going to overlook him.
No, so I'll just conclude my remarks and, and say, I think, I thi, I think, as we've done with our VIA program, finding some way for our residents to, to get to the airport would be important. If you want to go to San Jose Airport from the city hall midday, you can drive in your car 15 minutes and then park at whatever exorbitant rate they want to charge you. Or you can take the VTA. Do you have any idea how long it takes to get to San Jose Airport on VTA?
I do, I've done it.
Hour and 22 minutes. So I, I appreciate this. And I do think, right, this is the, the amenity of the, the top-story facility and the, and these other community benefits add up to a good deal for the community. Thank you.
Okay, John.
So, I have heard over the last couple of years, in fact, many more years than that, that the residents are very focused on the general plan and that things conform to the general plan. And I'm up here to, to represent what they've conveyed to me. On this Dianza Hotel, I'm a numbers person, and so I'm not a hotel person. So then I looked to see, well, what can I compare this to? And Councilman Chow brought up the Cupertino Village. And so I just passed a paper to staff, so if I can ask them to maybe provide some clarification. Is there a observation deck on top of the Cupertino Village Hotel?
Yes.
Okay, because from the drawings I looked at, it sure appeared to me there was a observation desk, deck on top of the Cupertino Village Hotel. Next question. Does the Cupertino, or Cupertino Village Hotel meet the general plan for the height requirements?
So when the Cupertino Village Hotel came in, they were only asking for one general plan amendment, and that was for room allocation.
So you're saying, yes. And does it meet the building plan requirements, so you're saying yes?
Yes, all, all requirements I meant, with the exception of allocation.
And fully compliant, they're going to pay in community benefits 1.85 million dollars. There's another fundamental thing that I think we have to understand, and that's fairness. We have to treat all residents fair. If somebody builds a house on one street, the next street over has to get the same treatment. And I think that also applies to developers, that within a small margin, where one might do a little bit bigger green space and another one, you know, might do the shuttle, within a small margin, I believe we have to be fair. And I think there's something very not fair about this. If this was a housing project, I think we would definitely be much more willing to, to push the limits, stretch the limits. But it's not a housing project, it's a developer profit project. So I go back to, the real issue for the residents is the general plan, and I think we need to be pushing the general plan. The general plan, mind you, was updated just two years ago to the, to the general plan 2020, 2040. We're only three months into 2020, and we're already tossing the general plan to the side of the road. This isn't 2035, and there's five years left. If, if we think that the general plan does not represent what the residents want, we should be changing the general plan and then approving something like this. Let's go and find out if the residents will let us change that general plan. The 2020, 2040, three months into 2020. I'll also go on to say that, okay, so this has been a 10-year project, and I wasn't here for so much of that, but what I do see in the pictures that have been presented, a change here, a change there, but nowhere was the general plan being talked about. We did this because it, it brought better conformance to the general plan. We did this so that we met the general plan. It was all about how to make this bigger. So I think, well, so then I want to go to another very important part, back to the fairness. I would be very surprised if Cupertino Village Hotel is not watching us tonight. Fully compliant and 1.85 million dollars, and they see this. What is this city council going to say in six months when, if that developer comes back and says, I want this, I want the sweet deal that he got? What's this city council going to say? Well, I'll leave it at that, time for us to move on.
Okay, so ready to entertain a motion? Wait.
Can I clarify that? In the development agreement, use, all the nice things that you are planning to use, like the birth safe glass, and, birth safe glass and the nice steel structure, are, are those already included in the development agreement, or are there languages there to ensure that's included?
That's something that wouldn't be in the development agreement, however, that would be, those are conditions of approval as part of the ASA. The architectural side approval does have conditions, and I think, I believe as well as the development permit resolution to ensure that the materials, as presented to council and planning commission, would be substantial compliance once it goes through the building permit process.
All right, thank you, so I'm going to close the public hearing now.
Wait, the birth safe, birth safe, we don't have birth safe ordinance right now. So why can we include that in the development agreement?
The public hearing's closed.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 20 dash 005, adopting a mitigated negative declaration, mitigation measures, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Number two, adopt Resolution Number 20 dash 006, approving a general plan amendment. Number three, adopt Resolution Number 20 dash 007, approving a development permit. Number four, adopt Resolution Number 20 dash 008, approving an architectural and site approval permit. And number five, adopt Resolution Number 20 dash 009, approving a use permit. And number six, introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance Number 20 dash 2195. Although, let me, let me just make that in a separate motion. So the five resolutions, 20005 through 20009, will comprise my first motion.
I would second if you would make sure that the conditions that we've discussed this evening and that have been agreed to verbally get put into the, the ASA. What is the correct?
The conditions regarding certain types of building materials to be used?
Certain, certain types of building materials, windows, dark sky.
Yeah, and formaldehyde.
And, and something to make sure that the provision on the, the transportation amenity is clarified.
Oh, right.
However, that best gets incorporated in all the, in this documentation set.
Sure, I, I believe we can do that, and we can do that as a condition of approval, and I'll let Heather. Sure. I believe we can do that, and we can do that as a condition of approval, and I'll let Heather.
Well, I believe staff said that the conditions regarding the dark skies and bird-safe are already in there. Would it help if we pointed council to where those are?
They don't point out directly the dark sky and bird-safe. The bird-safe design was, the building as designed right now is, we consider, bird-safe. One of the things we went through the initial stage was ensure that the architect was designing a bird-safe structure. You know, through the city attorney, maybe would that help to clarify the conditions of approval that would meet those standards?
So we can still put that in, you know?
Yeah, because you didn't mention the glass that's used, right?
And then finally, any resins that get used. I think we have agreement that they're going to be NAF or ULEF. That would be no added formaldehyde resins or ultra-low emitting formaldehyde resins.
To the 10, to the Bay Area Quality Standard, right?
Or beyond. I mean, it sounds like you're wanting to go beyond the standard.
Here's a practical way that the building can be engineered, and it sounds like, I mean, we had verbal agreement on that. We're not asking them to do a precise sequo analysis. We're simply saying as a practical matter, is the... I'm specifically looking at page three of four of the letter, second paragraph at the bottom. That specifies items. Mitigation, including a measure to require that the project use only composite material, wood materials for all interior finish systems that are made with carb-approved, no added formaldehyde, NAF resins, or ultra-low emitting formaldehyde, ULEF resins.
And I believe the applicant's agreement was to the standard, but I'll let him clarify.
Substantially, substantially. Just, you don't want to have one little thing, just substantially.
And that's why I'm trying to clarify. My notes say it would be in compliance with the Rule 18, maximum 10.
Reg 11, Rule 18.
Okay. And is that your understanding as well?
I'm not an expert on this, but I do know, we want to make this non-polluting. And so I think the standard is, isn't it substantially, not like, you know, there's .0001 or something. It's substantially, isn't there? I'm not an expert on it, but the intent is to make this a healthy building.
To meet that standard.
Right. No, it needs to not just be the, it needs to be explicit here. I mean, maybe I misunderstand something, but the buildings have to meet that.
The Cal Green standard.
Cal Green standard. I mean, it's not an option.
And the question is what Cal Green standard?
It could be the air district standard. It goes beyond this.
That's what I'm grappling with.
Okay.
That they have to meet the Cal Green standard, and the issue here is do we require them to meet the air district standard?
Maybe just require both.
Which is stricter than Cal Green.
I don't know the answer to that.
I think it's a hard analysis, right, as this letter points out. So I think it could be, I think this could be effectively met if there's agreement to use wooden material, all exterior, all interior finish systems made with NAF or ULEF resins. In other words, no products containing greater formaldehyde than those.
And is that the intent of what your project was intending to do?
You're asking someone who doesn't know, you know, it's like, I'm, you're an attorney and I...
The architect may know.
Yeah.
He specifies the materials, doesn't he?
Do you know anything about this building?
I guess we could postpone this while we all research this.
Yes, no. No, we research, this kind of analysis happens when we select materials. It's one of maybe a dozen criteria that we use to pick this material versus that material. So our goal is provide a building that maintains people's health, not is not detrimental to it. So we'd be happy to agree to some sort of, beyond the Cal Green standard, because that's the way we build anyway.
Would you agree that any materials for interior finish systems would not use formaldehyde in excess of that in the ULEF?
Sure.
Okay. That's what I'm looking for.
Great.
So that would be the standard, and then I believe the other was...
That's a very practical standard.
Right.
Yeah?
If I can make a suggestion as to where to put it. So we have a development permit that has conditions 14, green building, where this has to be a lead silver certification. We have Condition 15, adherence to Building Fire Code, and 17, exterior building materials and treatments. I think it could nest somewhere within those conditions, or we can add a condition that states that.
Seventeen point five, maybe.
Seventeen point five, possibly.
Is there a second reading with this item?
Yes.
Just the DA.
Not today.
So these resolutions would be adopted tonight, and only the DA would have a second reading.
Okay.
So we can, I think we've got clarity now in applicant agreement on how to word the condition of approval regarding the formaldehyde concerns. The, do we want to clarify the other ones as well? I believe you brought up the bird-safe design, and the city's response to comments explained that the project design will use bird-friendly design guidelines, and if we want to make that explicit, maybe the applicant would agree to that as well.
We agree to the bird-safe design, and I think part of that is that they put ultraviolet inside of the window that birds can see, we can't see it.
And the dark sky, right?
We have a condition on development permit 18, talks about site lighting, and it talks about how a licensed lighting engineer will confirm the lighting requirements. But we can certainly add language to that.
Requirement to, because we haven't adopted a dark sky ordinance, so it will be requirement to what?
Well, that's right, but that's why we could write it into the conditions here.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is we can include that in this particular condition 18.
Yeah, I heard. Let's do that.
And the requirement is to keep the lighting, or to direct it on-site, is that the issue? I'm seeing the applicant nod here. Okay.
Right, and the cost will be 50% of the guest cost for the shuttle that's in there.
And I think we could do that via a side agreement between the applicant.
Yes, we can do that. I can put on the record that we'll charge 50% of what we charge the guests. And for the native people.
That's the residents?
Residents that live nearby.
And so I think the parties are in agreement about how that clause is interpreted in the DA. To the extent there is any ambiguity about it.
Okay, so that would be my second.
One more thing that I brought up to Heather earlier. I think I fully believe that this project, you will, your in-full attention will carry it out as soon as possible. However, we have seen other, ever since I'm here, I think I've seen other things that granted by the city and easement or other vested rights as part of a, with a promise of something done in the development agreement. But the development agreement may or may not be carried out as time goes on, proper property change hands. So I asked Heather whether it's possible. Since we are granting quite a bit, we are doubling, almost doubling the height and allowing a big exception on setback. So I'm wondering, can we put some language in the general plan amendment to ensure that in case the development agreement is not carried out within the period designated, which is five years, I think, and the city council will consider reverting the height and setback that we are granting today?
Isn't that automatic? I mean, they either use the entitlement for five years, or they lose it?
So let me just make sure that we get a clear motion on the table before we go on to another. So I heard the vice mayor make a motion with a second by Councilmember Sinks that had a number of friendly amendments that we just clarified. Vice Mayor, are you accepting those friendly amendments to your motion?
I am, and that's to clarify to Resolution 20007, Attachment C in our materials regarding the development permit. I do have a question, though. There was one item that we didn't include, which was the noise. That's under Section 13 of the development permit. And I'm wondering whether the requirements there already meet the needs identified. So that was the third item, right?
Yes, and we believe that our noise requirement prevents any potentially significant impacts.
Right. I mean, this is a pretty detailed set of noise restrictions. So that's why I thought that it bore, you know, mentioning, because it was brought up. Okay, yes, I do accept those amendments with regard to the formaldehyde content in materials as well as bird-safe design.
Okay.
Transportation.
The shuttle.
The shuttle is under the development agreement. That should go under our second motion. I'd like to see if we can call it.
Wait, wait. So regarding the last one that I mentioned, so I think the general plan amendment, as I understand from Heather, once we approve this, all the height and setback will be forever. It won't be, even the development agreement expires in five years, the height and setback will be there forever.
To the extent that it is in the general plan, and the city council always has the discretion to amend the general plan at a later time.
Yeah, but in five years.
So the general plan amendment does not automatically expire.
Right, but what, you know...
But the city retains the discretion to change the general plan amendments at any time.
If they didn't build, and then we said, okay, you didn't build, we're amending the general plan, are they going to come back and say, hey, you're taking our property?
No, the development agreement vests the right to build the hotel, and regardless of what happens to the general plan at any time, well, as long as it vests it for five years. Within that five-year period, the city can still amend its general plan, and it can amend its general plan after that five-year period as well. But the issue is the developer will be able to build its project with the development agreement prior to the five years, and after the five years, the development agreement expires.
And he has to begin, he doesn't have to finish it in five years. It has to begin within... The DA permits, right?
Right, I mean, because probably this may take more than...
Yeah, pull permits, right?
I'm deferring to my planning staff here.
Yes, they're nodding.
I think there has to be an assumption, Councilman Chow, has to be an assumption that you want this project to go forward. That's why you're voting for it.
I definitely want, that's why I want to ensure that it gets done before five years. And then, okay, so it's true that the council can amend the general plan anytime. However, in five years, I mean, we don't know what happens. I fully, this is not aimed towards your project, it's just in general. Whenever the city grant an amendment that allow some vested rights, this right, even though, even after five years, the development agreement expires, that vested right will still be in our general plan unless the future council take action to remove that. But in five years, no one would have remembered that this happened, because this is what happened at Volco, the council gave easement for so many areas. For perpetual right, the property owner will get that forever, even though the development agreement associated with that was not carried out, even payment were not carried out.
Okay, let's stick to this project, though.
So I want to make sure that we have a good practice from now on. When we grant this, that's add something, a footnote in the general plan. The council will consider removing, reverting this to the previous setting in case the development agreement is not convened in five years.
Let me just make a comment on that. I mean, I think it's a good thought. I don't know if legally we can put language inside of a general plan amendment saying that this general plan amendment is ineffectual or no longer effective if this condition is not met, which is to say that the developer doesn't pull a building permit within five years as required. Now, if that's the case, and I think the city attorney should go on the record to, you know, verify or not verify that notion. But if that is the case, then I don't think we can bind a future council in five years either, saying that if the developer hasn't pulled the permit, the city council must consider whether to authorize another general plan amendment reverting it back.
It will just, they just need to consider, just a reminder to do it.
So I think the language would, yeah, it's an unusual provision to have in a general plan, but you could put in the general plan that an asterisk next to like the new hotel allocation or the new height that says that the city will reconsider this hotel application if, you know, 281 rooms are not constructed by March 3, 2025. And that's, and that's under the total allocation for that area.
You said, I'm sorry, you said the city will reconsider this application?
No, not the application, the hotel allocation.
Right, which is a GPA.
Right, and so that would be in the general plan, which is simply say that the city's going to reconsider this general plan standard.
A future, you know, a future council can do it, you know, they're not going to, but they could.
That's true. They would always have the discretion whether that's in there or not.
The future council has the discretion.
Right. There's a motion and a second. Can we vote?
To be clear and to answer John's point, the reason that we have a cap on hotel rooms and also office space in the city is so that we can have these kinds of negotiations that brought us community benefits. So tonight, we're getting a transportation benefit, we're getting a facility on the top, we're getting, did I say transportation? We're getting these various accommodations, and that's as a result of this tool that we have. So...
Okay, well, so there's a motion and a second.
So I'm just ensuring that tool works, because if these benefits are or not delivered, do they still get everything we are giving them?
If it's legally possible to put something in that says, right, this allocation expires if permits aren't pulled by this date, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it too. We just need an answer for...
But I don't mean just hotel rooms, but also height increase and the setback exception.
Yes, the language I read, you could put in your general plan for all of the amendments.
Oh, would you like to make that in the motion, put that in the motion, Darcy?
That's fine. I...
And I would second that.
I think it wouldn't matter for you, because you are going to carry it out anyway.
Okay, no, you got what you wanted. Can we vote now?
Right, okay, so agreed. So, yeah, so can we vote now? Do we need to make the motion again, or?
I believe what has happened is, just to clarify, that Councilmember Chow has offered a friendly amendment to specify in each location where the general plan amendments are made that the city will reconsider this, and it would be hotel allocation, height limit, or slope building plane if a hotel is not constructed by March 3, 2025.
Well, it's this project.
It's not pulled, not complete.
Right, right. The permits are not pulled by them.
Just permit, just pull permit.
So that gives five years to pull permits.
Building permits.
Right, which is, five years for permits is certainly sufficient.
So if building permits for a hotel are not approved.
Well, it's this hotel, right? It's not any old hotel. It's not a Days Inn.
You know, and again, this is not to pick on John, it's that we're worried about what's happened in the past in other projects.
Set a good precedent.
This hotel is difficult, so, I mean, my, I would focus on a hotel rather than trying to specify, but would be my advice.
Why?
Why? It's a specific hotel.
We're considering a very particular plan here.
Or maybe this site, because a mile might not be a hotel in the future, right?
So you want to say...
We're asking that the permits be pulled for this project.
This project, yes.
Within five years.
For the project to... For the project approved on this day.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
With all of its conditions, clauses...
It's not just a hotel, you know, he can't build the Motel 6 here, you know?
Okay, so it would be the hotel project approved on, on, March 3?
Right. Correct. Fine.
2020, so...
Okay.
Okay, sorry. One last thing, okay? I think I, I need to make this attempt. John Willie, Councilmember John Willie mentioned that the Cupertino Village Hotel has $1.8 million. So I think I would owe it to Cupertino residents if I don't at least propose this amendment and see if I have support to, to have comparable benefits of $1 million for this project also. And do we have the support for that?
I would not support that.
The original, to be clear, the original was...
You already agreed on...
No, 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 no. The original was $10,000 a room, which, for this property, when this originally went through the gatekeeper process, that was 1.55 million, all right? When we last discussed this project, a majority of the council agreed to whittle it down under protest from the developer to 500,000, okay? So it's not, if you want to go there and you want equivalency, it's 10,000 a room.
So it's supposed to be 1.55 million?
That's what it was when it cleared gatekeeper first time around.
Okay, so I'm going for the middle, 1 million. Do I have support for that?
I'll support it.
Would the, John would like to comment on that?
Sorry.
There's a lot of circumstances in this community that you may or may not know about. I mean, we have...
I, I, I'm sorry. I think, I think we've closed the public hearing.
Right, we have closed the public hearing, and we're supposed to vote now.
But...
Well, this is also, this is also part of the development agreement, and that motion hasn't been brought here.
Right. This is the DA, not these. And we haven't brought the DA here yet. Right, this is the five resolutions. So can we vote on the five resolutions with no more things? Okay. Madam City Clerk?
Yes.
Hold on one second. I'm trying to get an answer from the city attorney. About what?
Um, sorry, just, so, right now, we're voting on the three, the five...
The five resolutions.
Resolutions, not the development agreement. There's a motion, there, there's a motion's been made. It does not include any direction about community benefits in it.
Correct.
And so the issue now is whether to vote on those resolutions not addressing the DA or the community benefits in the DA. And so it's a yes, no on those.
Councilman, Councilman Chow said that she was proposing the 10,000 per room, but reduced to 1 million. Councilman Sinks said he also supported it. So there's two, and so then I've asked you a question.
So is that, so is that, is that a competing motion, I, I guess is the issue, is that, is Councilmember Chow making a motion to, to, to move the, the, all of the resolutions and to move the DA with, I mean, I guess I'm not clear on what your motion is.
No, the DA is being, will be moved separately after the resolutions.
Unless we have a competing amendment on the board for the, for the amendment that the vice mayor and, and...
Yeah, that's incorrect. I haven't accepted that. And I've already pointed out that this is a provision that's not relevant to the motions and, the provisions and, I'm sorry, the resolutions in front of us.
Front of us, right.
So I think that should be dispositive of it. I mean, this is not a difficult item.
Right.
You know, the benefits are not in front of us. Those are in the development agreement.
Which we'll, we'll get to in a moment.
Which is not on the table. And I haven't accepted the request. Maybe Councilmember Sinks indicated that he would support, but I would have to second, I, I would have to accept the amendment before the, the amendment would be seconded, which was by somebody else, by Councilmember Sinks. So, motion's on the table. I ask that we vote, and then we can go on to the development agreement.
Okay.
Second?
We've already seconded, we're already voting.
So vote.
Motion carries with Willie voting no.
Okay. Can we, can we take five minutes?
Well, no.
No? Okay.
Okay, well, if you want five minutes...
No, we can, yeah, let's finish.
Okay, I'm going to move that...
This may take a while.
Okay. Well, we're waiving the first reading. Why are we waiving the first reading again? Is there a reason for that?
We just read the title of the ordinance only, and we waived the reading of the entire ordinance. It's just the wording that was used by our outside counsel when they drafted this.
Okay. If you would please conduct the first reading of Ordinance Number 20-2195, please.
This is the first reading, Ordinance Number 20-2195, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino approving a development agreement for the development of a new seven-story, 155-room hotel with associated site and landscaping improvements located at 10931 North Deanza Boulevard, APN 326-10-061.
I move that Ordinance Number 20-2195 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitutes the first reading thereof with the, with the change with regard to the, the community users of the shuttle system as discussed before. And just for clarity's sake, I'm not accepting the request for the million dollars for the, for the payment in, in this current motion.
All right, I'll second that.
So I can propose the amendment, right?
Yes.
So I can, I propose the amendment to increase the contribution to 1 million dollars.
Second?
I'm not accepting that as an amendment.
So I think we vote on the amendment first, right?
So let's be clear. It's not, it wasn't accepted as a friendly amendment, but it, there can be a second motion before we vote on the first motion. So can you clear the screen, please?
Yeah, sorry.
So...
So we are voting on which one?
Isn't it called a substitute motion?
Yeah. I thought we voted on substitute motion first.
It's only a substitute if it would, right, that's what I'm saying. If you make a motion and it's different than the first motion, then we vote on the second motion first and then vote on the first motion.
Yeah, so we first vote on, do we want to accept the amendment first?
Well, but I think the friendly amendment's been rejected. So now you have the opportunity to make a different motion than the one on the table.
I'll make the motion. I move that we adopt Resolution Number 20-009, approving a use permit. Waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 20-2195.
I'm sorry, do you mean the development agreement?
It's not enumerated. You have to go to the next line, 20-2195.
Ah, yes. The, waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 20-2195 with the transportation provision as previously discussed and with the community benefit from 500 to 1 million.
And let me say that the city cannot unilaterally impose the community development. The city could direct the community development director to go back to try to renegotiate the development agreement with that community benefit. And then that item would come back to council if the developer agrees to it. Because the development agreement is a negotiated agreement, and the development agreement that is on the table has already been executed by the project applicant.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that.
So then is, do we need to make a motion to do that?
So it would not actually be the first reading, I, I'm sorry, it would, it would be directing the community development director to go back and renegotiate the development agreement with the community benefits as you, this, and, and can, can you remind me what those were again?
Well, this particular one would go to the, the amount of money offered to the city as community benefit plus clarification of the transportation price to residents.
And the amount of money you're leaving up to the community development director to, to negotiate? Are you specifying amount that you would like to see or giving direction?
We're giving direction.
And that is?
A million dollars.
1 million, okay.
So can the applicant comment? Maybe we, do we even need to negotiate?
Um, I think...
No.
My recommendation is that you, well, I...
I'd like to request that we take a five-minute break.
Mr. Mayor, if I can...
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, let's take a break.
And I would admonish people not to discuss the project amongst yourselves or members of the public during the five-minute break.
But you discuss with the applicant?
No, everything needs to be part of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.